I'd like to call the regular working education meeting into order. Please rise for a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all. Tell you please to move on.
Ms. Lynn? President. Ms. Hewitt? President. Ms. Batsch. Hewitt? Mr. Kasky?
Here.
Mr. Sane?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
President.
Mr. Zal.
Here.
Ms. Gaston?
Here.
Mr. White? Here. For our presence.
I sit in the back of the LGA.
All right. We're gonna go to a short executive session. You should be back as soon as possible. Thanks so much. Oh, oh, gee. I got to get myself. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the CSEA and to seek legal advice from the school attorney.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Okay, sure. Before we start our workshops, I'm gonna ask that we please rise for a moment of silence for Deborah Emridge, the head bus driver from Beacon City School District.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a couple workshops. We're gonna start out with the presentation of the school resource officer, Dr. Lindahl and Chief Solomon. Come on down. And I'm sorry, Chief Solomon, I don't know the person's names with you.
Chris Hamel from the Town of Poughkeepsie.
All right, great. Thank you so much for coming down, Mr. Hamel.
You're more than welcome.
So, tonight, I am gonna do some introductory information about school resource officer here in the Beacon Schools, and then Chief Solomon and Officer Hamel are going to fill in a little bit more of what it might look like. Couple things I wanna emphasize with this presentation is this is informational in nature tonight. The conversations about this position started at least with me on my third day on the job. I went over for a meet and greet over at the municipal building with the mayor and the city manager, Anthony Rosirio, and one of the things that they brought up with me was the idea of potentially sharing the cost of a position of having a school resource officer in the Beacon City School District. And so, we've had a lot going on this summer, a lot to talk about in the meetings, but we wanted to at least start this conversation before the school year started. But, again, I wanted to emphasize, because this has been asked of me a few times, there's no vote on this tonight, this is informational. This is a chance to learn a little bit more about what it might look like, learn a little bit more about what the next steps would be if we're moving forward with this, and also a chance to ask questions, hopefully we'll be able to answer some of them, and then we'll get the others down that we can't answer tonight and try to bring them back again if there's future conversations about this. So, you know, just on a personal level, I was an elementary principal for a long time, not a secondary principal, but where I was an elementary principal, we had school resource officers in the middle school and the high school, every single, we had five middle schools, three high schools in my district. I was on a campus with a middle school and a high school, so the two resource officers who worked in those two buildings spent quite a bit of time walking through our building, working with me on issues that came up at the elementary level. And I think one of the advantages of this program, just from that personal professional experience, is having that known person, that known person in the district to go to for safety issues, for problem solving, and for legal issues in your building. That is an advantage that I can talk about, just from my personal experience. When I've been reading about this this summer, just to kind of refresh myself on some of the issues regarding school resource officers, I came across a couple, a couple information items that I thought were really good. And one was an article from the Forum on Public Policy, and I, the reason I threw this quote up there is because it gets at what some people's concerns are about the role, but it also gets at, I think, what makes the role successful. And, so, the kind of relationships police forge with students and teachers, rather than the number of arrests they make, promotes school safety. And that's what I want to focus on with this, is that through my own experience and through all the literature, it's about the relationships that an officer makes in a school with the staff and with the students. We envision this role, taking on a few different things, and Chief Solomon and Officer Hamel are gonna talk a little bit more about this in a couple of minutes when I turn it over to them. But obviously, there's an education piece in what a school resource officer does, we'll talk a little bit more about that. When I talked with our principals in our district, the principals seemed really excited about the possibility of having one person, one officer, who's the school safety liaison for the five schools that are within the city limits, and having that one person to not only do drills with and talk about safety procedures in the school, but like I said, also do just general problem solving around issues that come up in the school. And then finally, part of the job is the law enforcement part. In terms of next steps for this, so we have had conversations, and we've been doing research, I've been talking with principals in the district, but a big and very important thing that needs to happen if this moves forward is a memo of understanding between the school district and the city, in this case. In 2012, this was right after the tragic events at Sandy Hook Elementary School, Obama, President Obama put out a call to have more school resource officers in the country schools. I think he put an initiative of like $45 million to help fund positions across the country. Four years later, the Education Department under Obama put some guidelines out where they thought they could help this position be more successful in the schools that either they funded or that schools were, school districts were funding themselves. And so, one of the things they really want districts and, you know, law enforcement agencies to look at is that memo of understanding, because they think that part is really crucial. If this position is to exist in a district, they feel that part of it is very crucial, either before it begins, in our case, that would be our case, before it begins, or districts that are already using the position to create it, to strengthen it. So, the first really key part of that is to establish that mutual understanding of what the position is. And in their rubric that they, that the other department put out, that mutual understanding should be staff understands, students understand the role, administrators certainly in the district, and then the other key part was community members, that there's a common understanding of what this role is, and that it's embedded in that MOU and people can refer to it if there's ever question or confusion. Another key aspect is hiring the right person. If you ever ask school administrators, anyone involved in the school about an SRO who's effective, it usually comes down to who that person is, and it's usually key parts that are, is the, has the person been trained, and also, do they have a willingness to forge those relationships that are key to making the position successful in the building? So another part of the MOU is to ensure there's initial training and ongoing training, so that's a key part of it, too. It's in the MOU that the person in this role will keep going back for training, whether it's training on the school side, it's training on the law enforcement side, or both. Another part that our attorneys would look at, but also you would look at as support, are we meeting, are we meeting the legal requirements for this position? So one of the things, if you start reading about positions like this, you start seeing things like, there are different levels of, for searching, for searching as students, staff, administrators have a different sort of requirement level for a search than a police officer does. That's one little aspect, but those things need to be spelled out in the MOU. And then finally, in the MOU, there needs to be some sort of evaluation process that both the school side and, in this case, the city side can feel like they're a part of. So these are things, in terms of, if there are next steps, and again, I think the point of this is to at least start answering questions, so I'm not gonna talk all night, but in terms of next steps, if there are next steps, if you give us direction for next steps, we would start working with the city to create this MOU for the board to look at, for you maybe to try to fine tune and ask more questions of, but that MOU would need to be in place before we even thought of putting this position in our schools. Couple last points about things that came from my conversations with principals in our district. While, you know, while the person would be essentially kind of housed at the high school, if the position exists, it would also be spending a fair amount of time at the middle school and the three elementary schools that are within the city, and so we envision this position to be kind of in all of our schools, out and about, and being, you know, a big public presence, so that's key to it, too. The other thing that the administrators, and this is kind of a basic thing, but they really made clear, and the literature makes clear as well, is that the implementation of the code of conduct in the building, the enforcement of the code of conduct in the building, is the administrator's job, period. It's not the job of the school resource officer to, you know, to enforce rules in the school. You can go online and you see some, you know, kind of horror story kind of things about, one thing I read just a few hours before this meeting, an administrator somewhere in Kansas would take a discipline referral and show it to the school resource officer and say, can you charge the student with anything with that? That's not a best practice, that would be considered a worse practice. So our administrators felt very strongly about this, too. We own the code of conduct, was their words. We implement it, we do the investigation, we decide or recommend discipline, if discipline is needed for something that happened, we own that part of it. You know, obviously, sometimes things, you know, not very often, sometimes things go beyond our code of conduct, and that would be where the law enforcement part would come in. But, instead of going deeper into that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Solomon and Officer Hamel, and they are gonna talk a little bit about their version for the role, too, and then we're gonna just open it up to questions. And again, whoops, if we can't answer them tonight, we will try to bring back answers in a future meeting.
Good evening, thanks for having me, thanks for having us. So, just to give you a little bit of background, I've been with the Beacon Police Department for about five and a half years, and when I got here, we had some manpower issues, we went through a period of restructuring, there's been a lot of turnover in the police department, we were under a Department of Justice decree, which is, we've been released from, so the department is a lot different now than it was when I got here, so I'm gonna preface our discussion on that. So, I kind of found it a little bit odd and a little bit disturbing that there wasn't an SRO program in place when I got here, but I was determined to, you know, to get, to try to get this going at some point when our manpower situation was a little bit healthier, which it is now. So we're in good shape to put an SRO in this school district. The person that we've picked for the role is, has the ideal personality for it, he's already received training in the basic handling of juveniles, he's received training in the SRO program itself, any other reason he's not here tonight is he's upstate juvenile officers conference, advanced training. So we've already put everything in place for him to literally hit the ground running when, and hopefully, if he gets here. Now, I've been a police officer for almost 30 years, you know, I feel very strongly about this, you know, as the police chief of the city of Beacon, I feel very strongly that the safety and security of the students and the staff, that we move forward with this program, I can't say enough about that. The co-mingling of law enforcement and education is just something that's essential, and the safety drills and safety plans are something that the SRO would play a key role in, and that's something that this district needs a lot of attention, and I feel very strongly about that as well. So, I'm no expert in the SRO program, so naturally, what I did was I brought a ringer with me. Chris Hamel is an officer with the Town of Poughkeepsie Police Department, he's been a police officer for 28 years, he's been an SRO for 12 years, he's an instructor, he's extremely well-versed in all the details and ins and outs of this program, and specific questions certainly I'm gonna turn over to him, and we can move forward from there.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hamel, if you could just kind of outline for the board what you, what your role is and how you see it, you know, being beneficial, or what the cons are as well, so the pros and cons of it.
Sure, absolutely. As Chief said, and thank you, Chief, and thank you, Board, for listening and having me here. Prior to being an SRO as a road patrol, in 1999, our department saw the need to put a police officer in the school, so shortly there, before it was Columbine, and that started the nation, putting police officers in the school. So we went to a training that was put on, a national organization, but they were based out of Florida. So everything that they taught us was generally based, not specifically for New York State. So after that training, I contacted New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services and said, this is a great program, we need it to be in New York State specifically. So myself and a deputy from the Dutchess County Sheriff's put together the curriculum for New York State with the help of New York State itself, and we've taught this curriculum across the state, from Westchester to Janistown to Buffalo, Syracuse, and all points in between, training police officers to work in the schools. The main spot of what we talked about, as the doctor talked about, is it's a triad approach. You have law enforcement officer, law enforcement educator, law enforcement problem solver, and in the middle is your role model. So what we wanna do is find balance. Getting in the classroom is the greatest thing that I think that the SRO can do, because by getting into the classroom and speaking to the students, the students see a different role that the SRO plays. We play that role, I'm not a teacher, or I'm an instructor, and when I get into the classroom, such as history, talk about the amendments to the Constitution, give them exactly what the amendments to the Constitution are, then in the science class, and done accident reconstruction, done accident reconstructures, and show them the processes going through. English class, talk to them about the importance of writing a well-written report, factual report, because a report that's written today can come back six years from now, and if you do not put the proper information in it, you're gonna be guessing at what you had done. So when we get into the classroom, we sit, then we do presentations. Health class is probably the class I'm in the most, because students always have questions about the different laws for drinking and driving, you know, the drab shop laws when it comes to house parties. The kids, so you're giving them an education to understand what can happen if they choose to do it that one time. So, by putting that all together, and we're in the classroom, the students get to see us in a completely different role. What I'm wearing right now is what I wear every day in school, okay? The students do not wanna see me in a shirt and tie, because they can't see me, they'll walk right past me, and I even know I'm in school for the day. So my day starts with greeting the students. I stand at the entrance of the door, and the kids come in, I'm talking to the students, saying hello to them, making sure all of my students are coming in, nobody else other than my students are coming in. If parents come in, we have a greeter, they deal with the greeter, and then they wait for the students to get in the class, and then they go about where they have to go to with the path. So as the students go in throughout the building, I walk the hallways, I check in the classrooms, I walk around, I just constantly make sure that my school is a safe school, safe for my students, safe for my staff, and safe for everybody that comes into, all the shareholders that come into our school, all right? And then as the bell rings, I'm making sure I'm in the classroom, or I am in the hallway from the classroom, walking around and making sure the students are moving through the hallways as, as if they can just my students are in the hallways. So there's the law enforcement side of the safety and security, and then it's the problem solver. Years ago, they talked about us being the counselor. Unfortunately, the counselors, who have all those initials at the end of their name, took, I don't know if they took, sort of say, objection to it, but I'm not a counselor, I'm more an educator about what we have to do. We deal with domestics, we deal with traffic accidents. A child's having an issue, having a problem, my door is open for everybody to come in and see me, and my door's a revolving door between my social worker, my school psychologist, and my school nurse. My phone's constantly, hey, can you help me with this, can you help me with that, the student needs to talk to you, where are you? Over there, I'll be right down. So, I always talk to the students, if the students have more than what I can deal with, then we come together as a group and say, this is what our best option is, help this child. And that's not just in my elementary, I'm stationed at the high school, but I do go to my middle school, and I do go to the elementary schools, and I do things differently in each one of those schools, because kids are different in each one of those schools. And hopefully, eventually, you'll see the elementary schools, kids in the middle school, and the middle schools in the high schools, you know, long enough that I can see all of them come through. It's a great relationship. I was an SRO from 2000 to 2009, my chief came to me and said, you're missing the boat, I'm being a sergeant. And I said, I'm not missing the boat, I'm being a sergeant, I like what I'm doing, I enjoy this. He says, well, it's time for you to come out of the schools. So when the chief says, it's time to do something, I can go kicking and screaming, but the chief asked me to come out of schools, I was promoted to be detective. I was detective for six years, and recently, this will be my third year back into the school, I went to my new chief and said, I need to get back into the school. So I left detectives, got back into uniform, and went back into the school. That's how much I enjoyed being in the school, okay? Burnout, I didn't have a burnout. Every day was an adventure in the school, there's good things. To the point that my students recognized that after I left, that they wanted me to come back and be the commencement speaker in 2001, I left in 2009. The relationship that we built with our students and that I built with the students in our faculty, and I can tell you something, my officer will tell you, they go to, we work in the Galleria Mall, students are always going, because Officer Hamel works in it. I like that. I like when they come back and bragging for me. I love, can't go to dinner anyplace in the town of Poughkeepsie without someone coming up to me, or a student come up to me. That's the part of the SRO that was good, because what I did is I built the bridge in that gap. It wasn't about me against the students or students against me, it's me being there for the students and helping them out. The daily activities changes. One thing most important is the safety of my students and the safety of my staff, okay, and the community around us. So I take that very serious. New York State puts regulations on the schools, administrators can't meet these regulations by themselves, and if they say they do, I have to, I have to say, that's impossible, all right? Most people don't realize this, but by September 15th, all schools in the state of New York, all schools.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? I'd like to thank everyone for attending our ninth grade orientation. We had a great turnout. At this time, the program has ended. Again, I thank everyone for joining us this evening for our orientation program. Good night, and have a safe trip home.
Sorry about that. No, it's okay. As soon as the bell started ringing, I knew something was coming. So New York State puts regulations on the schools, and one they came out with last year, and how it was mandatory and how to be done, is by September 15th, all schools in the state of New York have to have a safety presentation done by September 15th. Most schools fall short of that. They don't do a safety presentation, that safety presentation is all on your shell. What is a shell? Can I ask you guys what shell stands for? It stands for shelter, hold, evacuate, lockout, lockdown. And that should be able to, and any administrator in any school district should be able to rattle that off fairly quickly. And that is the gist of why we do what we do. The schools have to have that in place, and it's by September 15th. So super comfort, they should have some kind of safety and bloodborne passages, it's not one. Okay, so it's all about your safety procedures. The administrators can't do that. Police officers that get trained in this curriculum that I just did, where Brian just went through his training, it was a training that I put on for the Dutchess County Sheriff's under the guidelines of the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. So we put that on, and in that, we went over all the lockdown procedures, all the holding places, all the sheltering places, that they don't call them fire drills anymore, they're now called evacuations, and how many drills you're supposed to do before December 31st, and how many you have to do prior to the end of the school year. So all of these, they have to take place, plus, being an administrator, go to their meetings and do everything they have to, is very difficult. That's where the police officers and the police department come in. On the safety teams, your district has a safety level, and they have your building level, on the safety, on the district's overall safety team should be a police officer, and someone from a fire service. Each individual school has a safety team, and police officer and fire service are required to be on that, all right? That's what New York State requires. Having that same person to go to the meetings, having that same person in your buildings, having that same person that instructs, is vital to keeping the schools working in the right direction for the safety, and that's a big part of what I do in the school. Once the students are in the classroom, if I'm not in the class teaching, I'm in my office working on our safety plans. I can't, I cannot agree more, and looking up that, I cannot agree more, that we have to meet and exceed the expectations of our Constitution and our civil rights, we can't fall short of those, from our department policies, from what New York State requires and what the federal government requires. It's the same, it also goes the same thing as the program that the doctor says about training the officer, you have to have him trained, the right person has to be in there. It can't be anybody but fit for the school and fit for the department, someone that's gonna make the department look good as far as a public liaison, community service, okay, and also working very well with the administrator, the faculty, and the students, okay? I can seriously talk about this for the next couple hours, but I think I gave you enough, and please ask me questions, and if I do not have an answer right here for you, I'll do the research and get you the proper answer, all right? But please ask me questions.
Is the curriculum from the SRO, is that available for us to review?
Absolutely. If you like it, I would be more than willing to give you a copy of our disc that we have from DCJS, which is our Criminal Justice Services, and show you what we have. Now, understand, that is the guideline, we can add to that and make it even better, and because I'm an instructor for New York State, they say, hey, you wanna add some things to it, add it, just let us know what you added. Okay? I said, not a problem. We'll get that for you. No problem?
So I just wanted to, Chief Solomon, I understand that this is, I appreciate that this is, it sounds like it's a priority for you, it's something that you felt like was a gap here, and one of our goals as a board is to work more collaboratively with the city, and I'll be honest and say, this was not the first area that I expected would come our way, but because it's a goal of ours, I think that we should be open to having a discussion about it. It also sounds like it's something that you kind of feel like should happen yesterday, but at the same time, I hope that you'll indulge that we'll need to have a bit of a process for ourselves, because this is, again, it's, you know, it's something we're gonna have to wrap our head around, and ask a lot of questions, and do some back and forth.
I understand that. I think one of my primary concerns is that, you know, the safety plans and the quality of the drills that are being conducted, you know, I've got concerns.
That's one of the questions I was going to ask you, which is, have you identified gaps in terms of safety within our schools?
Well, we've had, you know, we've had a quasi, you know, we've, a quasi-participation in district safety plans, but we need to, we need to really jump into that stuff with both feet, you know, we need somebody who's got more time dedicated to that than like Jason Johnson, who's been kind of doing, you know, the school liaison kind of thing, you know, we need somebody that's committed to do it right, like somebody like Officer Hamel. In order to do it right, and make sure our i's are down and t's are crossed, you know, we need somebody that's got, you know, the time to commit to this, and, you know, I'll say, this is the kind of stuff that keeps me up at night.
I appreciate that. The other thing I'd like to ask is, Officer Hamel, since you've been a part of implementing these types of programs across the state, what are the conditions in districts that set an SRO up for success? You know, do you have almost like a checklist of, these elements are present, and therefore the relationship works well?
Well, that's a great question. Is there a checkoff list? No, could I give you a checkoff list? I could create a checkoff list for you, but I can tell you this, where we've had some pitfalls in the training, because officers will contact me, say I'm having a problem, I can start out with them, tell them, you are gonna have some problems right away. You might have a board that says, we are having this, you have a superintendent that says we're having, but you might have an administrator that says, you know what, this is my building, and they're correct, that's their house, we're guests, all right? We're there for them, and if we see something that doesn't look right, you need to have a meeting, and just say, listen, here's what we have, but you have to go at it slow. This is no different, I explain to them, this is no different than a civilian coming into the police department and trying to change rules and regulations. Can it happen? Yes, it can happen. Is it a slow process? It is. But the success I've seen is the collaboration between the SRO and the administration, the SRO and the faculty, and specifically, the SRO and the students. Is every student gonna be happy to visit a police officer in a building? I can honestly tell you, no. And I can tell you, one of my first days in the school, I had a girl in the middle school says, I do not like police officers, I wish you were not here. And I said, well, I'm sorry to hear that, but I am here to say, if you ever need something, you come see me. I could call her up and bring her in here, because we still contact each other today, and she's already been out of high school for 10 years. That's the stuff that I look forward to, because now I know where I'm standing and what the students want. I don't take it personally, but there's where I need, we need to work together and change things. So pitfalls is a person that sees that and says, you know what, fine, and never work on that child again and leave that child alone, that's a pitfall to me. To work and work with people like that, I think that's, that's a great deal, all right? That's something that we all strive for. There are students that would like to have police officers in here yesterday, all right? It's a feel-good for some student to see that police officer standing in the hallway. But really, the checkoff is how you make your daily activities and what you do for that school, and how you communicate. Nobody lets surprises. So communication is one of the biggest things.
From, I was speaking specifically about what conditions in a school, I'm not questioning the SRO, I'm talking about, you know, it would be our job to make sure that we have accountability, you know, for how this officer is utilized, and one of my, you know, there's, I feel like there's two concerns at play here, one is that you can find a lot of, you know, reasons to push back against this initiative, but I've also But I've also heard from a lot of people really good feedback and, and from surprising places. And so, and I've also, I know that the officer who's been trained by the Beacon Police Department is, is exemplary, and I've heard great things about that person. You know, as somebody who has cops in my family, I'm thinking, I don't wanna put somebody in a really vulnerable position, I wanna make sure that the systems are in place so that that person doesn't have their worst day, you know? And so that's what I'm wondering about, like, part of it, I think, is we're going to have to get feedback from the community and encourage people to raise their concerns, because I think that people giving voice to their fear is really important, and we'll give them the opportunity to, you know, at least say things, it might not affect our decision, but we need to hear it. And it also would be helpful to hear what people are afraid of, just so that can be factored into how this is rolled out. But also, what are the conditions that set an SRO up for success on the school side?
What sets them up for success is getting into that classroom. Getting your foot into the door and getting to know the students and the staff. That's, that's, that's how you start success. You cannot start to have success without, without getting someone in the door and start working. That, that is how you get success. By introducing that officer to the students on a regular basis. When I first started in the school, they decided to, the school district and the police department said, you know how we're gonna do it, everybody has to take history. You're gonna go through every history class and introduce yourself and go in with the administrator, and the administrator's going to explain exactly what the role and responsibility of the SRO is. We are not the code enforcement, all right? We are not to take the student discipline and look at it and say, yeah, that's good, or I'd give a couple more days. A- absolutely not. That is not our role and responsibility, that is the stakeholder, which is the administrator, that's their job, whether it's the assistant principal or a principal, that is their job. If they have questions for us, you know, what, what do I do in this situation? We can give them that answer. A lot of things can be done by the administrators, a lot, a lot more than what can be done with the police department. Okay? The last thing that we wanna do is really make arrests in the school. And I've done, I know that's a big issue with a lot, with a lot of parents, a lot of teachers and a lot of the community, is how many arrests are you gonna make? You know, it's really subjective to the circumstances that are, that are going around. I can honestly tell you, the school district that I worked in in the twelve years that I've been doing this, have arrests been made in the school? Not specifically in the school, but because the administration says, listen, this is, this can't happen, and a student wants to come forward and press charges, doesn't mean that their child's gonna be arrested right then and there in school. It's basically a phone call to the parents, say, hey, listen, here's the deal, this is what happened in school, maybe at the police station, we'll, we'll talk about it there, keep it out of the school. All right, but that's not driven by the police, that was driven by a complaint that was given by a student, that says a student was assaulted. That's not up to the police officer to, to make that arrest, that's up to the person if they wanna press a charge. It's like that with most of the public, when they come to us, they want something done.
As I say, that happens regardless of whether there's a school resource officer or not.
Absolutely correct. There, there has been times where it has been a school resource officer, the student parents, I'm thankful that the school resource officer was the person that dealt with my kids, I know where they're being dealt with fairly. That, to me, that's success. Unfortunately, there was arrest, but it's not something that the SRO themselves were geared on. If it's because a complaint happened, whether it was on the street, the same thing would take place. Unfortunately, it happened, it happened in school with or without an officer, something would have, would have been done. Okay? So as far, and I have to tell you something, twelve years, have we had our ups and downs in the schools? We absolutely have. Personally, the, the ups and downs we have is when we have a child that is no longer with us because of a car accident, okay, or with us because they're ill. To me, that was one of the biggest things that, that hurt all of us, but we all came together and brought in all of our resources to help the rest of the students. To me, that's another win. I mean, I can tell you that this much is negative, well, this much, I was talking to the chief before, law enforcement, most people that has this ninety-five percent a problem, in the school, we have ninety percent good. And that five percent is still not even considered five percent that we see in the street. Okay? So to me, I see more of a positive than a pitfall. Okay? I hope I answered that correctly.
Yeah, yeah, very helpful.
Any other questions?
How does this program get paid for?
Chief?
This is gonna be up to you. That's something that, that's gotta be worked out between, you know, the administration and the city. I haven't been really directly involved in those discussions, so I don't know that, you know, I don't know specific numbers, but I know some things have been tossed around, but that, that stuff would have to be finalized where, you know, the city would, would contribute a portion and the district would contribute a portion as well. But I'm not the one to answer that at this point.
Is it grant funded or not?
We have, we had applied for a grant, that's not directly related to the school resource officer program, but we can kind of tailor some of that around it. That grant's been submitted, it was submitted last year, and then we were, we were like right there in New York State, we probably would have the next one up to get that grant. And then they rescinded it and put it back out for RFP with different, kind of, you know, a different spin, so we reapplied and we're still waiting for an answer.
I, I reached out, I, you know, shouldn't be giving away any sort of negotiating position, but I contacted the superintendent's in Dutchess County, and the majority of them have a school resource officer, I think there's maybe just two or three districts that don't, and all of them, all of the districts fully pay for the service, but this would be a situation that we would be in like a cost sharing thing. Chief is right, we're working out some of the details there, but, but we are working on sort of, we pay half, the city pays half. If, if you all want us to move forward with this, we would come back with some specifics for the next, in the next meeting or down the line.
Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, Officer Hamill. What is the relationship and the interaction an SRO has with the existing school security?
Um, I am the school security, I am the SRO. We have a breeder that is a retired state trooper. He, he treats everybody that comes in, and my relationship with him is fantastic. He needs a break, I sit at the desk for him while he takes a break. Some of the schools that have SROs such as Ketchum, and also has a security force, they get along very well. Harlington, SRO and a security force, they get along very well. And the reason I know that is because I've trained both the officers that are in those schools, and I've been to the schools, and I know a good portion of the security officers there. It's a very good relationship, and it's one on trust. There, there's like the hierarchy, if, if the administration needs something done, the administration handles it, the security is asked to do something by administration, the security handles it. If the SRO is asked by administration to do something, they, they work together. That's where it's important, the SRO knows the difference between what they can do and what the administrators want them to do. We've all seen the videos out there where you're looking, you know, how can that happen? Unfortunately, they were set up for failure when they were asked to do something they, they really didn't have to do or should have done. And that's where they have to, to know, they have to know their limitations. Okay?
So, um, so my question is monitoring mentoring, because in, in, in order to have a SRO to me that's gonna come into the school, this officer also has to be involved and engaged in the community if he's gonna be a local officer. And so, building up that relationship, and I spoke to Chief Solomon, I can say that there's been some positive interaction, I told him I was gonna make sure, 'cause I'm a loud mouth, that I say that there's been some positive interaction between the police and community, and I think that that needs to increase. I do have some concerns about the SRO coming into the school and the development of a community relationship as well, because not everyone, as you said, sees the police as a positive reinforcement. And so therefore, the lens in which we look at the officer is definitely going to be different. So if there isn't a specific monitoring of this officer and there isn't any mentoring that we know of, then that may lead to the officer kind of moving on their own accord to do things. So when you're saying like walk throughout the building, you know, I'm breeding the kids, like again, I think developing a relationship with the officer prior to the officer coming into the school building kind of lends itself to a more productive outcome, but is that something that's done now or no?
Well, the way things, things are done, the police departments are, they, they pick the police officer. And they pick that police officer, and I, and I'll say this to you out loud, 'cause I went to a, a school down in Westchester, they were looking to do an SRO, and it was the very same thing that they didn't, majority didn't want it. Well, that school now has an SRO. Because they, they were under the impression that it was going to be someone that just because they deserve a chance to do something else, is that, that's the wrong person. You have to have the right fit. You have to have the person that, that wants to do this, that wants to work with the children, that wants to work with the young adults, that wants to work with the administration of the school, as well as working with the administration of their own, their own police department. They have to be committed to their community, such as the school says, hey, listen, we need you to come to the prom. Okay, go to the prom. The school says, hey, we have field day, can you come over and help us with field day? You, you go to field day. You do the events with the kids. You get out there and have fun. We have a dress down day, and you get in. You know, well, you start these little things. One of the things that I've seen Beacon start, is like, I'm doing a normal police department, is we just had our second year of a youth academy, it was one week, forty hours of volunteer. These kids came in and saw, saw the Beacon, and that's a great start right there, to let them see the police officers working with the students, and the students going back, said, you know, we did this. We have kids already saying, listen, I went on the list for next year. Those kids are in the schools that are in the town of Akipson. So we, we wanna foster that. And it's not because we're, we're trying to get in there in police officers, but sometimes if you do a program like this, kids get to see the, the other side that they don't get a chance to see. And that's where the role model, when I talked about the triad approach, the law enforcement educator, law enforcement problem solver, and the law enforcement officer in the middle is a role model, we wanna be that role model for the kids. We wanna put things on for the kids in the school, we wanna be there and engage with them. And that's what's important, I've had this conversation with the chief leading up to this, that officer, and when I talked to the officers that were in that class, very first day, I said, how many of you are told you have to be here? Because if you're told you have to be here, let me know who your boss is, like call him and tell him, come pick you up, because you should not be here if you're told to be here. You should be volunteered to wanna be here in this class. And the officers want to be there, that's the start, there you go, they're, they wanna be there. So I, I really do think that they can, they can get in.
So does the curriculum and instruction speak to the diversity that is with the SRO may, may counter? Like, is there anything? Cause like, so the way we communicate may be different depending on where you come from, and so curriculum speaks to that. I'm the certified skip R instructor, and I also did CTI, CIT training, and so those curriculums are two different curriculums, but they serve the same purpose with two different populations. When I'm looking at this curriculum, does it speak to the nature of the people that they're gonna be servicing, so that the, the officer goes in with a sense of, some sensitivity to the, to the population that they're speaking to?
So that's why it's important to pick the officer that knows their community, that works in their community, works collaboratively with their community. That's, that's where you pick that officer, because they already know their community, they already know what they're going into with their community. All right, that's, that's, that's the beauty about the community policing. You're gonna know, you, you're gonna know the demographics already to go into that school and start working positively with everybody. When we, when, part of this program is that every officer has to pick a curriculum while they're in the, in the school and, and give a, a presentation on it. And they have to tell me what age appropriate is and what the presentation is, and it is for the school they're going to be, to going into. This is, you can, you can take police officers that are willing to work with kids and put them in a setting, and you can mold them to that, that setting and work with them. Hope I answered that correctly.
And you can tell me what shell, I got shelter, hold, evacuate.
Shelter, hold, evacuate.
Shelter, hold, evacuate, lockout, lockdown.
Thank you.
So, you know, just to, you know, add to what, what you asked and what Officer Hamill answered, I already told you, you know, several times and for several different reasons why I think this program is important and why I want it. You know, with that, I will tell you this, that, you know, given the opportunity, I will not let it fail. I'll be watching this very closely, closely, just to ensure it's successful. So I wanna ensure the board and the public that, that I'll be personally monitoring the program and what's happening to make sure it's successful. So I just wanna assure everybody that.
Thank you. Just because we have a full agenda, is there anybody that didn't get to ask a question, have a question that they wanna ask, if you already asked, so?
I didn't ask all my questions.
But if you have other questions, maybe we could submit them and then we could get the answers in.
Well, I mean, I have questions about, I mean, we had Detective Williams, we had Detective Johnson, we've had a common face here in, in the school. What is it, it sounds almost like the difference between the SRO and the common face we've had before is, is something that's provided by somebody who's not in a uniform and not in, that's not the sidearm, which is the mediation, which is the fostering, which is the mentoring. So, I mean, like, can you make, can you help me understand what's the difference between what we've been doing before and what we, and how this is different and how, how, how this is? In other words, I mean, I do appreciate your service and, and, you know, and kudos to you, Chief Solomon, for, for, for the, for the great improvements you've made in the department, and, and kudos to you, Officer Hamill, for the great success you've had in your school. But, but we have competing interests here. We have limited resources, and, and I don't know if, what, you know, the mentoring or the, you know, we're talking about restored justice, we're talking about mediation, internal mentoring, you know, those are stuff that you're saying that an SRO could do, but also we know that somebody without a uniform and a sidearm could also do it.
Well, what we've done in the past is kind of a hybrid thing, where we've had people with multiple duties, you know, kind of doing the school liaison type thing. Hasn't been a true SRO program, the training hasn't been placed, and hasn't been somebody who's dedicated, you know, specifically to that program. That's what we're looking to do now, rather than when Detective Williams and P. Assending were here and now Johnson. These are people that have a multitude of duties, and this being, you know, just a small fraction, I mean, everybody's spread thin. So this'll give us the opportunity, and the school district as well, to have somebody that's dedicated to the program exclusively.
I have a bunch of questions that more have to do with the history of this opportunity coming to us, which I can submit to district staff, but I did wanna ask if, we've talked very much about how it has to be the right fit, this person's trained in all these things. So is that person calls in sick, who shows up in that person's place, or does no one show up?
Well, we would, we're still working out like scheduling issues and that kind of thing, when that person would be allowed to take off, you know, whatnot. If that person called out sick, no, we would not have a SRO.
But just, okay.
But obviously, the police department would be responsible to.
Right, of course, of course.
The needs of the school.
Yeah. That's all for now.
Tricia?
I mean, just, I mean, I know you're gonna ask questions regarding the history, but it is something that the board has discussed in the past, is to have an SRO, and I think it, you know, Bill could probably speak to that too, but I think it did come down to who and what and what the cost would be to the district as well. I'm familiar with SROs in a district, in the district that I work in, and, you know, as far as like be, having them be involved with the safety plan, you know, and those lockdown procedures and lockout drills that we recently, like I did a lot of them last year, unfortunately.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, so if any other board members have questions that weren't answered, maybe you could send them to myself and Dr. Landau, or, and we could get them to Chief Solomon and Officer Hamill, and we could get the answers for that. All right, it's a nice board meeting.
And I think we should encourage the public to reach out to us.
Absolutely.
If there's a board, if there's concerns or questions, and I think this will only be as strong as much as we hammer out the front.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you very much for coming, we do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the second part of the workshop, of a three-part series, is the second part of the facility operations, we've been talking about a capital project.[1722.35] At the last board meeting, we had architects talk about the project as it relates to the construction piece and the timeline and so forth. So tonight, we're going to have Jason Swart talk from the financial advisors firm as to the funding piece for it. So Jason, come on down.
Did you want to pull this up in a little, Amber, or just want me to talk from the architect?
I may have to start and then I'll catch up.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. A number of familiar faces in the crowd from our work with the Facilities Committee. But for those of you who haven't had the pleasure of meeting, I'm Jason Swart. I work at Bernard Donning Incorporated, where the district's financial advisors. So as Anthony was mentioning, you know, the Facilities Committee's been going over the last couple of months, going through some potential scope and kind of working out what the financial impact of that would be. And obviously, Ryan Beck came and talked with you last week about what that scope is that the Facilities Committee has come up with. And so naturally, the next step would be, you'd be interested in seeing how do you fund that scope and what does it cost you? So that's what we've got tonight for you, is a financial report to kind of touch on how that all works out. You know, we at the BPD office, we like talking about, we just create some spreadsheets and numbers, but I know not everybody gets the same feel out of it that we do. So I'll try to keep it pretty high level, so I don't give you a nice headache here on a Monday night. But by all means, if you have any questions on anything I'm going through, if you want me to drill further down, just stop me and ask. So to start off, right on that page, Amber, is a good spot. Just a couple assumptions that we're building into this report.
Page three, right, okay.
Just a couple assumptions we're building in, just to kind of give you an idea. The first two are kind of the key numbers. So the district gets sixty-six point nine percent state building aid ratio. So that means for every eligible project that you spend on, a voter-approved capital project, you get essentially sixty-seven cents on the dollar back from the state. So that's one, you know, big benefit to get that helps pay for this project. And the other thing that we kind of factored into this is we're assuming a ninety-five percent bond percentage, we call it, which is essentially saying that we're assuming ninety-five percent of the project costs will be able. You know, in discussions with the Facilities Committee, with the architect, it sounds like, you know, potentially even more than that, that the scope could be able, up to a hundred percent. But we like to build in just a little bit of conservatism into the numbers, so that we're not giving it kind of, you know, the most aggressive picture. So that's kind of how, you know, two big factors. And then the other key assumption, number ten, the borrowing rates we've used. We've assumed notes at a four percent and bonds at a five percent, which is pretty conservative compared to where today's market is. But you guys are sure the architect might have touched on with you last week. Obviously, you know, if you go vote this project in December, coming up here this winter, you're not turning around and doing your construction and bonding the next week. There's going to be a delay there for us to get approval. So those are relatively conservative rates that should hold out between now when you're actually getting any funds. So if you want to go to the next page, please, Amber. So as Ryan Beck would have gone through you last week, the, you know, the proposed scope that you guys are looking at is around eight million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. So how are we breaking that down? On the right-hand side, you can see the expenses, you're going to have, you know, obviously, eight million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. But to pay for that, on the left-hand side, in the revenue boxes, the district has a little over three hundred and forty thousand Excel aid left, which is a program the state put out back in, I want to say, like, oh six. So the district had a very large allocation through that. And we used a lot of it through some of the past projects, the twelve million dollar project you voted a number of years back, but there's still a little bit left that we can leverage in this project. In addition to that, the district is proposing to put a million dollars of capital reserves and cash into the project as a, you know, sort of a down payment to help kind of offset some of the local share of the project. So you've done a great job over the last couple of years, putting some money away and really kind of watching the financials. We even recently had an upgrade in the bond rating a couple of weeks back from all that, all the work you've been doing. So that's obviously going to help the picture of this project. And then the remaining seven million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, almost six hundred and fifty-three thousand would come from bonds. So that's how we pay for the rest. One other thing that the district has kind of going in your benefit, if you go to the next slide. So this is a summary of your existing debt, but where you can see it even better on the bar chart we have in the next page of the report. You've got, so this is a bar chart showing what your existing local share of all your existing debt services. And you can see, we draw that black line across the page, is kind of where you're at right now in the seventeen, eighteen year. You can see in two years out, there's going to be a drop-off. You have some old debt retiring. So that's another big benefit that you have that makes, this is a really good time to go up for another capital project, is you can leverage the drop-off in the debt service to minimize any impact of this oncoming project. So that kind of lays out some of the, kind of the upfront information. Any questions on any of that or?
One of the things we're voting on tonight is refunding bond resolution, which is a way of putting some money on our existing debt. Is that already factored into this?
That is not factored into this. This is your existing debt service as it is today. So we haven't taken any refundings into consideration in this, because, you know, we won't know how much you saved until we reach the funding date, which is going to be probably, you know, a month, month and a half from now. But if that, you know, if that does go forward and you, you know, experience some savings from that, then that would just bring these existing bars down. And when you see at the end of the report, we'll see how the new project fits into this, but that would just make it even more favorable.
Okay. So I just want to make sure whether it was the assumption that we were going to do that.
Yeah, that is your debt service as of today.
Okay.
Are projects the able dependent on type? Or are they able dependent on the way state aid is assessed?
It can be both. Your aid ceilings are, you know, fairly large. Because, so there's two factors. The state gives you what's called a maximum cost allowance. They say, this is the most you can spend on construction incidentals that we'll aid you on. You could, you know, the voters can approve a hundred million dollars for a project, but we're only going to aid you up to, you know, twenty million or whatever it is. So anything beyond that would be, regardless of scope, would be not able. But that's not really a factor here with the size project you're looking at. And then second of all, there can be scope concerns, such as, you know, sometimes additions aren't as able. You know, if you're doing work, it's certain buildings that don't really have any student classrooms in them. So if you had like a standalone district office that was, had no student capacity in it, then that could be.
Right, we've encountered that with our, but, so if our population changed significantly and we had to add on to a building, is that something that's able? Or is that something that would be funded exclusively by our taxpayer?
It can be able. It depends on, you know, there has to be a justification of the state that you need that addition, that there's not room within the existing footprint of destruction, that you have the enrollment to support it. So that's something that if you're ever looking at that kind of scope in a project, that that would be something you'd work through with your architect, your project manager at SEA, the State Agency, to kind of confirm on the front end what that would mean in terms of your building aid. Okay, so the next couple of pages in the report are just kind of how we calculate the building aid, but there's, you know, nothing, just a lot of complicated math there, so nothing to get too much into. But what you'll want to see is on this next page here, the maturity schedule. So you can see, in column C, we show we're paying back that principal of seven point six million that we said that we're bonding. Now in column B, you see that one point three million of other cash sources that the district has. And in column G, you've got building aid coming back at those percentages we talked about. So when you put it all together, on the far right-hand side, you see the local share of this project alone as a standalone unit. So it's about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand on average. A little bit weighted toward the front end, but on average, about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So that would normally be what you might be trying to quantify as tax impact. But as we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, you have that existing debt that's dropping off. So when you factor that in, if we go to the next page.
Just one question on that page. So really, what the column, if you go back there.
Sorry.
Column J, that's how much that we would be spending our annual budget towards paying off the debt.
Right.
So each year is slightly different as you're paying off some and you're having less interest in column.
Yep. So on the next page, we take a look, if you recall that chart we looked at back in the beginning of the report, we had the existing debt on the left side, like we had, and then we dropped in what the debt and building aid for this proposed project would be. And you can see in the far right-hand column shaded in gray there. It's not as easy to see on this page, but you'll see it better on the bar chart on the next page. But by adding in this new project, you stay at or below where you currently are in the seventy-five budget. So there's no tax increase for this project that fits within the parameters of where you are right now when combined with your existing debt service dropping off. So if you go to the bar chart, where you can kind of see that. So if you recall, in the, you know, a few slides back, we had, starting in 2021, there was a drop-off there where the bars weren't right in that line. So this new project fits in, you're going in right to that line with no tax increase. And then you guys have more debt retiring even further out. So not only does it go to the line for the first year or two, but then there's also even some, you know, further drop-offs after that.
And that's what we've talked before about developing a five-year plan. It was when Ryan Beck, our architects, had gone through a building survey. It was a long list of projects and we focused on the ones that we need to do in the near term, and that's the eight point nine million dollar project. But the remainder of the project, we're looking at for, we talked about the 2022 timeframe. And this is exactly why we're looking at, because there'll be more debt service retiring. So we'll have the ability to have a larger, actually a larger project then. So part of the Facility and Operations Committee is putting together now, once we get this project rolling, putting together that five-year plan in order to be able to be ready for that 2022 project.
How often does the state evaluate the building aid ratio?
The building aid ratio? The ratio that you're going to get aid in that gets locked in when you vote. So they've, you know, over the course of the years, they've changed. It was, the rate is, they'll call it Build Formula, then it'll build ten, build three, and now they're on build four. So that gets locked in when you vote. You know, and anytime that changes in the past, projects have been grandfathered in at the ratio they were at. There can be a little bit of change year over year for some districts. Amber, if you go down a few more slides, there's a bar chart, the next page after that. So this is your building aid ratio chart. The yellow line's not usually so near. So the key one to focus in on is the build four, as I mentioned, which is the third one down. And you see that's been at sixty-six point nine percent for the last, you know, roughly eight, nine years. So it can fluctuate a little, you know, year to year, but typically, it stays pretty close and that's what you get locked in there when you vote.
And is that the same across the state? Or is that for us in particular?
The sixty-six point nine is particular at Beacon City.
And is it based on the demographics, the income of the?
Yeah, it's based on your relative wealth to the rest of the state. So, you know, if you had, you know, assessed valuations that were going down, whereas the rest of the state was going up, then you get more aid or vice versa. But there are some factors that kind of lock it in at sort of a minimum rate, because they kind of give you a look back to the ninety-nine, two thousand years. So there is sort of a floor in there where you can't drop below a certain amount. Like even if your assessed values took off through the roof, you're not going to go down to like zero percent or anything like that.
Would you care to say that the, probably the biggest unknown is the actual state aid? And so, you know, and once upon a time, they changed their rules about how often they're going to pay it out over on projects and things like that. Is that the biggest thing that we have no control over?
I mean, if they make a change, you have no control over it. But they haven't done that since 2001, where they changed the rules kind of midstream. I mean, it's been, typically, the building aid is, you know, one thing that's fairly easy to predict compared to other aids that you might be getting, because it's what we call an expense-driven aid. So if you spend money on a voter-approved project, then you get the money back over fifteen years from the state in the building aid ratio. And that's, that's pretty set in stone. So it's actually one of the few, you know, aids that you kind of control at the local level more so than, you know, when you talk about like your foundation aid or something like that. That's a little bit more variable.
I mean, I just know that in the past, they have changed, like, how many years are they going to pay it out over, things like that, so.
Yeah, that's, you might be thinking back in like 2001, they changed it. They used to pay you like based on when you did the debt service. So if you paid your whole, you know, project off in one year, you get the aid back all the next year.
And spread it out.
Right, created too many headaches from a budget perspective. So they said, we're going to pay everybody's aid over fifteen years for a renovation project, regardless of how quickly or long you take to pay it off. So that is, you know, back in 2001, and they haven't done anything like that anytime recently, so. Yeah, well, because the thing to keep in mind is if they did anything like that, it wouldn't just affect you, it would affect every district in the state, so.
You're thinking about when this high school was built? Was that, that was about when the high school was built?
I know, it's probably the whole of that.
Yeah.
And if you, Amber, if you go down two more slides, just back to Kristen's question a little bit earlier. This is where we calculate the aid ceilings. So when I was referencing, you know, construction incidentals, those numbers in the yellow boxes are kind of what the state calculates as your maximums per building. And you can see down below that, that all the numbers are, you know, pretty significantly in the green. So you're really not close to any of those aid ceilings based on the proposed scope. You've got at least a million dollars of cushion at every single building, so. Any other questions on anything in the report or any of our assumptions? I think just to kind of recap and summarize, essentially between the money that the district has set aside, the Excel that you still have available and your retiring existing debt service, basically you can take on the proposed scope that Ryan Beck presented last week and have no tax increase as a result of this project.
I have a question about the refunding bond resolution. I don't know if this question for you or. I mean, basically, there's no real explanation of how we're going to save money on that. So if you could maybe explain how, you know, what's the factors of refunding bond resolution? You know, of the refunding bonds itself that's going to cause to save money? Is it lower interest rates, short period of time, I mean, what?
Right, yes. So essentially, you know, it's a combination effect. Because first of all, you know, rates are lower than they have been typically. So you'd be able to, you know, save some money just because the rates are lower, so you can issue a bond at a lower rate. But also, you know, the thing you run into is anytime you issue a bond, by the time you reach the call dates, you've now taken that fifteen-year bond and you're, you know, if you're going to refund it, you're refunding it with maybe only a seven or eight-year bond. So you're on the shorter end of the yield curve. So, you know, if you issue a bond and you say it's a four percent net interest rate, it's not four percent for each of those fifteen years. It's, you know, two percent for a couple of years, three percent, four percent, five percent. So when you get to doing a refunding, we're refunding those higher two bonds, the four and five percent coupon's. And now we can issue a shorter bond that only has those two and three percent coupon's. So that's where you get the savings kind of generated through that, through those two factors. And as an update, I think we'd sent like an analysis when this first came up, and it was roughly like eighty thousand of savings over the life of the refunding. And, you know, I checked in, kind of the ten-year treasury is kind of the closest benchmark you can have to what refunding bonds go at, because refundings are usually seven, eight, nine, ten years, something like that, left on the term. And that's kind of dropped a couple basis points even since that initial analysis. You know, we don't have an updated analysis tonight, but, you know, it's probably even a little bit better than that realistically today from where it was when we first brought it to you a couple of weeks ago.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jason, we do appreciate it. So going to part three of the next workshop. Amber Lee is going to be presenting on the tax form and tax levy. Sticking with the funding.
Sticking with the money, right? Okay. Good evening. We do this presentation at this meeting because we asked the board to actually do a roll call on the tax warrant. So we're just kind of, during the budget process, we give you an idea of where we think you're going to be. We use estimates and now we can give you a much better idea about where the taxes will be. Will be after the warrant, we send out the bills within the next couple of weeks. So the taxpayers can get an idea of what will happen. This is just a recap. Our levy increase for the budget was one point three four percent. That was something that we presented during the budget process. And because we had a successful bus proposition, we increase, we increased the levy by a payment of what the bus proposition is, so it's a point two oh percent. So total of one point five four percent overall for the budget and the buses. And that is right at our cap, so we are in compliance with the tax cap. This is the, this is the slide that actually calculates the tax cap. And I'm not going to really go into detail in this, but this is something that I started a few years ago and talked about, the two percent tax cap in each district's a little bit different, unfortunately. You know, we're closer to one point five four percent. But the important part of this slide is the levy amount. So our levy amount of thirty-seven million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight twelve. That's the levy amount that we are spreading across all the taxpayers in the Beacon City School District. That tax levy remains the same across. There is not extra money that we can do. And I'm going to talk about assessments in a minute, because we did have a change across the three municipalities of our assessments. I had a question recently from a taxpayer about, you know, there's extra building going on. Will we get, will the district get more money? And the answer is no, the district gets that money, that is it. It just impacts people differently and we'll talk about that in a second. Just a reminder, these are just kind of housekeeping things that we were able to use two point five million dollars of excess fund balance and reserves, which we've been using before, but that's how we helped pay for the budget. And we are using two hundred and fifty thousand of the tax reduction reserve. Now, we created that tax reduction reserve when we sold Old Beacon High School. And that reserve needs to be used within a ten-year period. We're at year six or seven, I believe, when we still have money left on about a little less than five hundred thousand. So we have to use that in ten years, so we're systematically doing that. We did not use any money from the debt service reserve, which we have used in the past as well. So we still have that money available. Just some highlights, the equalization rates remain at a hundred percent. That was done in two thousand five, six. So everybody, the three municipalities are assessed at a hundred percent. Impact of the increase in assessment values, and you'll see in a second. But we did have an increase in the assessment values across. And I'll show that, how that impacts the tax rate. Tax sociaries have an impact on taxable assessed values. So we do every year get sociari claims that people brought in to bring down their assessments. So we do every year get sociari claims that people brought in to bring down their assessments. Thankfully, we do have tax sociari reserves. So in case we do get a judgment against us, we have the reserve money to pay for that so that it will not affect the revenue side of the budget. And the STAR exemptions, and every year the STAR exemption decreases. This year, it's not as much as it has been, so it kind of helps with the tax rate a little bit. These are the percent changes in assessments. So for Beacon, homestead and non-homestead, the difference is homestead's residential, non-homestead is business. And we have seen an increase. Beacon is over five percent in both homestead and non-homestead. Fishkill and Wappingers, so everything on the residential side increased. We did see a decrease in Fishkill non-homestead, which there were a couple of sociaries and changes that were made. So that was kind of predictable there. These are our tax rates compared to sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen. Our tax rates have decreased. So when you're spreading that same levy across all of the households and businesses, you do see a decrease. So each person is paying a little bit less in the tax rate across the three municipalities. These are the homesteads, so what the bills will be going out to the taxpayers.
So it's about thirty cents for a thousand less? Looks like that across the board?
Yes.
About thirty cents for a thousand.
And I will go into how that affects people on the inside, each person. Okay. I just want to show you the STAR exemption. So it did decrease, but it decreased, it wasn't as significant as it has been, which also helped the tax impact across the three municipalities. So we use, just for comparison sake, I still use the same median assessed value, just to give an example. Because we do the comparison from year to year, so I wanted to kind of keep it static. So an assessed value with the current STAR in the city of Beacon, there will actually be a tax reduction in your tax bill of seventy-five dollars. And again, that is the reason, because more assessments have come on, there've been more properties, so we're spreading it out over more people, so each individual person will pay a little bit less. Same with town of Fishkill, their assessment is a little bit more, so their tax reduction will look a little bit higher of around ninety-one. And in the town of Wappingers, three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred assessment, if that's around what your house is, with the STAR exemption is a reduction of ninety-seven dollars across the board. And again, I left this slide in from last year, changes in STAR exemption. Just a reminder for the people really that are listening. STAR became automatic, and it got reduced from your tax bill. But again, if you purchased your home after August first of two thousand and fifteen, your tax bill will be for the full amount, and then you have to apply for a refund to come back. That's different. I wanted you to say it again because we do have, we've seen a lot of people move in, and be first-time homebuyers, and we wanted to make sure that they understood when they got their tax bill and about the STAR exemption. Does anyone have any questions on the board?
So Amber, can you go into a little bit about the cost wealth index and how it affects the levy or may not affect the levy and so forth?
The cost, in fact, I printed ours just to kind of see where we are. So our state aid is based on our wealth. And so what they do is they reevaluate, they look at our adjusted gross income, they look at our assessed values. The difference is they look at two to three to four years down previous. So it hasn't actually caught up. So eventually, and our aid is based on that, we're at a little less than one percent or point nine percent. Basically, what that means is that we get a certain amount of state aid. As our wealth increases in the city, in the district, there's a potential for our state aid to decrease. So although our assessments are growing, if our wealth increases, then there'll be a direct correlation between the wealth and the state aid. So we won't become, we won't be as, we'll be richer, we'll look at it more in the state. You know, they have all their formulas, and it will just, it could impact our state aid. And if you looked at the history of state aid over even the last ten years, you will see that the tax levy percentage, when you have to float, when you actually pay for the budget, the percentage of the levy has increased and the state aid has decreased. So for example, when I first started the district, we were pretty much at a fifty-fifty split. But now the levy's more about fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and the state aid has been a lesser amount. So we have to be careful. So we want the assessments to go up, if the increase of the amount of assessments won't affect the wealth ratio. But if, what we're seeing too is that houses are being sold, they're being sold for higher. So once those assessments reflect that, there's the potential then for the state aid to decrease. So it's not all positive part of getting more money. We have to be careful of analyzing and making sure that the wealth ratio is kind of together.
So the second part of that question, so in regards to development in Beacon, if more people come up, it doesn't mean more money to the district. It means that it's dispersed through many people. But if the cost wealth index goes up, that means that our state aid, if their houses are selling for more, the state aid could reduce. But we can only still go up with a certain levy cap.
Right, so the levy cap on that spreadsheet is calculated. That is what our levy is. How we pay for it, and part of the budget process was a slide of how we pay for it. And basically, we have to make the levy work and we reduce the state aid. If we get a reduction in state aid, the levy would, you'd have to pay for it more through the levy. However, you can't go higher than the cap. So then that's where decisions might have to be made of things that couldn't continue in a budget line, or you'd have to use more reserves. So it's not a direct correlation.
And is that kind of what happened in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight with the reduced amount of state aid that the district got? And then they had the gap elimination that we just addressed.
They changed the format, and then there was the gap elimination adjustment. So any time that there's a reduction, or even if the state aid remains flat, because the budget will never, it's difficult to be flat with increases in salary and benefits. So if the state aid remains flat or goes down, then there's other ways we have to pay for things. And if it's not through the levy, because we're kind of stuck on what the levy cap can be, we then have to reduce the budget. So that's where, we've had years where we've had lists of things that we had to decide to cut or eliminate positions and not fill, and you know, so there's that potential going forward. We have to be careful and monitor the state aid just to make sure. So it does help us, it helps the individual taxpayer really, the increase in assessments. It's just taking the levy and spreading it over more people, and each individual person is paying less. But that doesn't mean that it generates more money for the school district. We still have the same amount of money coming in. And I think that's a misconception for people, you know, that I just want to make sure that everybody understood that it's not directly, we don't get any more money for things developed.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to point it out, that even though an increase of one point five four percent, yet the tax rate went down by about thirty cents per thousand.
Right.
So, yeah, a little counterintuitive.
This is probably the first time I've seen the taxes actually decrease. They've been close to even, but they've never been that way. So again, we have to be careful then next year going forward.
Anthony, is you have a question?
Yeah, so I mean, basically what you're saying is when the tax base, if that increases, that doesn't mean that we get more money. So it just means that we distribute what we said we're going to build to everyone else. In later years, does it ever help us then? I mean, are we kind of stuck somewhere?
We do our calculations separate from that. The assessments help us divide the levy across the entire school district, but it does not generate any additional revenue for the school district. Our tax cap is what we have to levy.
Yeah, but the tax cap is based on last year's base, right?
It's on the budget, it's not on the levy.
It's not on base of...
Well, it's based on, it is based on the levy. It's a percentage increase on the levy.
So if there's a larger tax base, would that mean more funds the year after that?
No, because you're saying the tax base, so what you're saying is the assessments. So we're increasing in assessments. That's how we spread the levy out, but the last year's levy only can be increased. Levy is the amount of money that the people, that the people and the taxpayers have paid. But we can only increase that by a certain amount of the cap. The assessments are how we spread that levy out. So currently for this year, people should see a reduction in their tax bill because there's more people that are paying for the levy. That's how we're doing it.
I mean, if we didn't have a tax cap, you could do something, for example, to say we're going to increase, you know, increase our budget by five percent. And if the tax base had gone up, you would get more money. But the problem is that we're not allowed to increase twice. We're limited unless we go with a super majority on the vote.
We need a super majority for that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of impossible, it's just that it's very difficult.
Is that similar to how the municipal tax cap was?
I know that the municipalities have a tax cap. I'm assuming it's the same, similar calculation. I don't really know the particulars of that.
And if we did go for a super majority, just to kind of keep up with the developments, so to keep people's taxes the same, would then the next year would just go back to the two percent? So if you raised the levy to try to kind of keep it equitable with the development that's happening, then that would be the new levy that would then go up by two percent each year.
Or whatever the cash, right, that's correct. Because that would be then the base, so you'd have to...
And if we had a sudden associated cost increase that we haven't accounted for in our budget? We're doing sort of careful math here because if we get richer and we're determined that we're wealthier on paper, and then we lose our state aid funding, and we can't really make up for that cost within the two percent, we still have to cover any associated costs or Facebook, which would mean per pupil spending if we had an increase in pupils.
If you, right, you have to be careful.
Number of kids who have to pass, any of those associated costs.
That would be in the budget process, so you'd have to make it work. So you'd have to know what the levy was, and you'd know what your reduction in state aid would be. So either you choose to use reserves that you have, you know, or you have to actually reduce the budget. And then you get into the items of things.
So you're richer, but you kept programming.
Right, so if you compare us to other districts, that's why other districts get less state aid because they're wealthier. That's how, that's how it's all calculated in.
So if you calculated it so that everybody's tax bill remained the same instead of that reduction of thirty cents, then you would have gone over the levy, but you would have brought in more money if your tax bill would have been the same.
Right.
You would have more.
And then you needed the super majority to do that.
You need the super majority to do that, yeah. But you don't know that until you get the final count of what the total...
So the assessments don't come to us until July, so they come right from the real property office.
The Gordian knot.
Right, so we use last year's as a base, and for years, that's been fine, and we've always had a small increase. But in this particular year, we're seeing, except for the non-homestead Fishkill, but the way it's all spread out.
On that wealth ratio, I believe on the state level, there has been some discussion, not much official, but about what measures are used to determine your wealth. Property taxes, property assessments are one. But there are certain other measures that could be used, such as school lunch eligibility for reduced prices or free. And I'm wondering if you've heard anything current, or maybe Bill has picked up something from the school boards, associations, as to whether there's any serious effort in changing those measures.
I haven't heard. They do have, for the business officials, they do have a state aid workshop in September where they talk about preliminarily what will go forward and what's sitting out there as discussion points. So I can share that with the board once I go, and I go at the end of September. So if there's anything on the horizon, I can let you know.
I did some research associated with this presentation today. What I found is that there's always a lot of chatter around it, but there isn't much change.
There's so much politics when it comes to determining your wealth and state aid that, you know, it really means that if you make it better for one district, some other districts not going, it's going to be worse. And that's trying to get that to, so everybody's happy is very difficult.
All right, thank you very much, Amber. All right, so there's some corrections to the agenda. Fourteen point oh four, K number two, has been removed from the agenda. Fourteen point fourteen, the agreement with Weston and Sample has been removed. And we have an addendum to the instructional list, which is going to be a separate motion with two resignations and a claim of substitute teacher. All right, are there any student or school presentations? Are there any parent group presentations?
I've never read this off my phone before. Let's see how it cuts.
It's all about taking this, Rebecca.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'm here to take it. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Corales, and I'm co-president of Beacon Advocates for Music, along with Debbie Brennan, who's here tonight. Our treasurer is Braden Smith, and our secretary is Ryan Havers. I would like to start by reading our mission statement for Beacon Advocates for Music. Our mission is to preserve core curricular opportunities for students in music and to support and enhance music experiences for all students in the Beacon City School District. With this mission in mind, I'm here to speak on behalf of all music advocates in our school community. Anytime a student's opportunity for music education decreases or diminishes in any way from one school year to the next, it is a cut to the program. A program cut can occur without cuts to staffing. It can also occur simply by changing scheduling or by grouping students in different ways within the school day. As music advocates, it is our charge to preserve learning opportunities for students in music. We are delighted to see that the full-time band director position has been restored to our elementary instrumental music program. There are many benefits to this decision. Consistency in instructional delivery is the obvious first advantage. Also, resources and instruments can be made available to students with much more efficiency and much more meaningfully. We applaud this decision, and thank you, the administration and Board of Ed, for supporting this as a regained priority for our school district. As music advocates, we are concerned, however, with another aspect of the new twenty seventeen, eighteen music schedule. It seems to be the case that overall throughout the elementary schools, many students will actually have less general music instruction than they had last year. We see this as a program cut, and we must respectfully state our strong disagreement with any scheduling decision which decreases opportunities for music learning for students. While we understand and support the effort to equalize learning opportunities and experiences across all elementary schools, it is important to move toward this goal creatively without sacrificing programming that is already in place. Our position is that music education programming should be preserved and enhanced, not lessened in any way. Beacon Advocates for Music strives to participate in a truly collaborative, community-based decision-making process that keeps the focus on student learning experiences. The music program is an integral part of our community, and we look forward to working together with you, the district, leadership, to support our music program here in Beacon. With that, we wish all staff a productive and positive school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Are there any other parent groups? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the public session, public comment. Rebecca? You're taking a risk and leading off a lot fast.
Yeah. I remember my glasses, that's the last kid. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening. I know I probably don't have to introduce myself at this point, but I'm going to anyway. My name is Rebecca Schofield, and I am a former student of the Beacon City School District. This is the first meeting where I've actually been able to say former. I started my journey in the Beacon City School District in two thousand and four at Forest Solomon School. I then continued to the middle school in two thousand and ten, and in two thousand and thirteen, I moved up to the high school. Lastly, in June of two thousand and seventeen, I graduated high school and ended my journey with the school district. These past thirteen years in the district have helped shape the person I am today and has set stepping stones for the person I'm yet to become. Do you feel old yet? I know I do. I'm here tonight to personally thank the Board of Ed, all the administration, the parents, the community, and all the faculty of this district for their hard work and dedication.
I truly believe the best part of this district is the teachers and their ability to go above and beyond other students. Words cannot explain how thankful I am to have worked with the most amazing teachers over the past 13 years. Two years ago, I started attending these meetings to find out more information about the district and how it functions. If I couldn't make it to the meeting in person, I would wait anxiously for the video to be released on YouTube. Throughout the last few years, I had met with students to discuss their education. Then, I would personally meet with Ms. Quateroni, Ms. Quateroni, Cecilia, and Cecilia to advocate for the education of all students. Last week, I even got a chance to meet with our new superintendent, Dr. Landall, to discuss her student advocacy efforts. Thank you, Anne Marie, Cecilia, and Dr. Landall, and others for personally taking the time to meet with me and many parents of the district. I think I speak for all of us when I say this. This district has grown immensely in the last two years. The atmosphere at these meetings are a lot different than it was two years ago. I'm proud to call Beacon my home. I'm able to say that I feel prepared for college because of all the things I was taught during my 13-year journey with this district. I will be continuing my education at Pace University as a nursing major. Don't worry, I'm sure this won't be my last appearance at a board by the end. I would like to hand you the quote. Aristotle once said, "Educating the mind without educating the heart is no education at all." I hope you all remember this quote when making decisions for the district. You, the Board of Ed, are the decision-makers of this district. Think of your own children while you are here. The reason I was able to accomplish and graduate wasn't because I could recite and remember facts from the textbook. I accomplished so much because I was taught compassion, education, and hard work. It won't be easy, but I know if we work together, this district can improve to the best it can possibly be. Thank you for your time.
Well, Rebecca, I'm speaking for the board. As I say this, thank you for being a dedicated student and going on and having aspirations and setting goals. Do not hesitate to tell people that you graduated from Beacon High School, because you will make Beacon look good. So thank you very much for coming back and taking the time to express where you have come from and how thankful you are. We're thankful for how you've come, and young lady, we hope to have your kids in school one day.
No rush.
Don't rush. Brayden.
Hello, my name's Brayden Smith. I'm a parent of now officially enrolled two kids in Forest Alumnae School, very excited, they're very excited about it. I'm here to speak on behalf of the, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the Beacon Advocates for Music. That was Rebecca's role tonight, and, but I do want to reiterate that I strongly support what she said in that even though the band director is a wonderful addition to the school district, and I'm very thankful that we have that position now in the elementary school, the problem is that it, the way the schedules have looked for many students in the school district, especially in schools that, in areas of Beacon that need it the most, will have less general music instruction. And band is fine, it's great. Many of the most talented musicians, many of the parents who have the most interest in music will push their students to be interested in band and chorus, and will have greater opportunities in our school district. But nothing replaces general music for those that do not necessarily have parents that see music as a top priority, or have the resources to give their students the opportunity to perform with others in a classroom, or sing songs in a chorus for the first time. That happens in K through one for the first time for many students, but now in a large part of the district, they're going to have less general music education, and I think that's, that's a terrible outcome from scheduling. I suspect and I hope that it's not a permanent decision. I think there are ways, creative ways of fixing the problem, and I hope that the board and the administration will consider them going forward. I think one of the strange side effects of what has happened is that instead of looking at how we could come up with a creative solution to improve music in the elementary school system, we ended up with a model that prioritizes library media. And library media is wonderful, we have some fantastic library media teachers in our school district, but what we've done is fixed their schedules, and we fixed them to the point where it's very unlikely that they're going to have additional time to do the other aspects of library media specialist job that is important to school, to teachers in the school district. Things like consulting and educating how technology is used in the classroom, assisting in lesson planning with teachers, and having the library and library media center available for teachers to use for their own lesson plans and projects, to bring their students into the library on, to work on projects that they've, that they've developed in coordination and collaboration with the library media specialists. If you overprogram the library media center and the library media specialist, you can't do those things. They're not going to have the resources to do it, and they're not going to have the time and availability of the library media center to do it. So I feel like the schedule, as it's turned out, I support the equalization of opportunity across the school district, but I think some priorities were misplaced. Finally, I would like to just stress that the curricular changes that occur in the school district, and this is, this is a curricular change, it would be really wonderful to have parents involved, to understand that this is happening, to understand what it will mean for the, for students' education, to notify parents that this is a change the district is going to make, and let parents have a voice in that process. That's, I think, an important role that the board could play in fixing how parents interact with the school district. Find some formal rules for parents curriculum, find some formal rules for parents at the school district level. So thanks, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name is Sean Mark, a parent, taxpayer. First, I wanted to ask about the planned capital project for Sargent. My daughter was asking about the air conditioning a few weeks ago, and I saw some stuff about ducts, pipes, and I wasn't sure if there is anything planned for air conditioning for The other thing that I wanted to speak about, I missed the beginning of the presentation by the Chief Officer Hamel, but I do have concerns about having this position in the school. I understand that part of it is the safety drills and programs, but if I'm not mistaken, the officer that was here works in this pack, pack of K. I think spacking K, which is very different from the Kixi, and very different from Beacon. And I think as a district where we have a large minority population, we already have a discrepancy between the staff and the population of the school. This is an extra consideration for us that doesn't exist in a suburban district, and it's something that needs to be thought about very carefully. There is a lot of criminalization of behavior and of smoking or marijuana that happens anyway. I'm concerned about it for our kids. I would really think about it very carefully before I have a policeman in the high school. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Do you need my name, because I'll spell it for you?
Oh, you can just say it.
It's Emily Jocelyn Rower.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to write my comments. Good evening. I'm a parent with two children in the district. I'm also a clinical social worker who's worked in a high school with a really high percentage of court-involved youth. I've been involved in like...
High group.
Oh, sorry. I've been involved in, you know, altercations that have happened, the police being called, so I come to this both with interest for the safety of staff and all the safety of the student, and also thinking about kind of what it means and what brings us to bringing, wanting to have a school resource officer here. So I'm here tonight to ask the board to consider the impact that bringing a school resource officer would have on Beacon schools, especially during a transition period in the district. In the past year, I have been heartened to see the board's interest in looking at how our current policies and procedures impact different student communities. I'm looking forward to learning and understanding how our current discipline system impacts learning in the school community. Without a deep evaluation of our current system, it seems dangerous to introduce officers into our school. Officers who have a documented tendency to be used for discipline and under whose supervision and intervention behavior issues more often get escalated to arrestable offenses with greater numbers of referrals to the police and often a student's introduction into the criminal justice system. Use of SROs is also well documented as more common in schools with a higher percentage of students of color, suggesting a troubling, criminalizing lens that well-intentioned districts may unknowingly have in place. As the board rightly looks to address unconscious bias at every level of our district, it seems counterintuitive to add a program that is so closely associated with bias and seeing young men of color in particular as older and more dangerous than they truly are. I am so glad to be a parent in this district, and I'm looking forward to the next chapter with our new superintendent and the thoughtful and engaged board that we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. We're going to move to the superintendent report. Landall?
Thank you. Just some things I want to highlight. While the board meeting was happening, we had ninth grade orientations tonight at the high school. It was very exciting while sitting here to see actual students walking on the other side of those open doors. If you can tell, there's a little bit of a theme. I really am looking forward to this school starting. Not that I don't enjoy spending a lot of time with adults, I really need to see kids in our buildings, and I really need to see it soon. So that is happening next week, and I can't wait for everything to get started tomorrow. Orientation is out of Rambo. Six, I have notes written on a different piece of paper that are sitting in my office, but sixth grade is in the morning, and then they do, oh, there's the principal right there. Sixth grade at what time?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty in the morning, so we're starting...
Seven and eighth at one.
Seven and eighth at one o'clock, so we're excited about that, too. Thanks to your comments, Rebecca. One of the things I have some experience with in previous roles that I've been in is involving students in the process of school improvement and school governance. So we have a goal of having a student member of the board this year, and we are working on that, and our goal is that that starts this fall. I had a lot of experience with that in NIFCA. We had five student members of the board, three from the comprehensive high school and two from the smaller alternative school, and when I was sitting there giving a presentation, I always knew they were probably going to ask the hardest questions that I had to answer the entire night, so I'm excited about bringing that here. The other thing we had that I'd like to start here as well is something that would be both with middle school and high school students, just basically called Superintendent Student Advisory. And that would be a group of students that will meet with me on a monthly basis, just to talk about the same things we all talk about. Goals that we have for the district, their input on those goals, and their thoughts about moving forward and improving the student experience. So I'm excited about starting that as well. I just want to briefly also talk about some of the concerns brought up about elementary scheduling. So I, I'm not going to, you know, get super into detail about what is in the current schedule we shared with the board. I already shared with the board a couple of days ago what our, what our schedule is moving forward for this school year. I guess I should start by saying that I have concerns about the schedule, too. That may be odd coming from the superintendent, but there are concerns in that I think we could do better as a district. You know, and this isn't, when I say this, I'm not trying to pit at all groups against each other, but one of the things I really did try to do my first month, and we're going to be doing round two in September, is these community conversations. And when I had these community conversations, I heard from a lot of different people about things that they wanted to say in the schools, and so I certainly heard concerns about music, but I also heard concerns about PE and the amount of PE we have, especially at the elementary level, concerns about art. And so, you know, so my long-term goal is, and long-term being probably the 18-19 school year, of course, it's resource-dependent, but my long-term goal is to have a schedule in place, not to get too specific, that increases the amount of PE, art, and music that students have. The way you do that, at least from my experience, is you have a four-day rotation. Again, I'm not going to get super in the details, but you have PE two of those days, art one of those days, music one of those days, and, and like was in one of the public comments, you have library outside of the rotation. What I'm used to is library still actually, part of it's still on a schedule, you want to make sure all the students experience library, and so the principal works with staff to create a sort of a separate schedule for library, but it also provides some time for our library media specialists to kind of do that, that work that was described in comments, like some of that more impromptu kind of work. So that's kind of a long-term thing. My goal is that we can think about doing it for the 18-19 school year. My guess is it's going to cost us probably two to three teaching positions, could be a little bit less. I haven't really studied it, but that's just a guess from my experience working with that. Just looking at this year, we do have a schedule, and that schedule, we're getting super close to school starting, we're going to have to go with that schedule right at the beginning of the year, and we may end up running that schedule the entire year. That all being said, I will revisit the schedule with, with staff at my level and principals just to see if there are some improvements we can make to it that, that sort of get at some of the things that not only concerns brought up tonight, but concerns brought up over the course of the summer. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things I, it's a model that I've seen really work. Again, it's not perfect, there are people in NIFCA that complain about that model as well. I think probably with a schedule like this year, there's always going to be feedback of that nature, but I do think it would be improvement on what we're doing now. That's not to criticize the work that's gone into it, I think it's just something that, of course, resource-dependent, budget-dependent, I think it's something that we should look at for the 18-19 school year. But I, I will promise a couple of things. One thing is that in a upcoming meeting, either the 11th or the 25th of September, that we come back with, here are some, here are some tweaks that we can make to our current schedule, or if we can't, you know, why we can. And the other promise that I'll make is during the budget sort of cycle for the 18-19 school year, takes place in the late winter and spring, that we will be really definitive about what we're doing with the elementary specials going into the 18-19 school year so that everybody knows what they are and what it will look like, you know, not in August, but they'll know hopefully when the budget passes in May. And so, that all being said, the last thing I want to sort of tie my loop together and then I'll stop talking is that, that parent part. I think there are certainly some formal structures that could arise, but right now, I'm going on the informal, sort of in the of having formal, and so I, you know, over the course of July, you know, it was intense in a way because a lot of people showed up, and we have a, I was able to meet with about 100-plus people in the five community conversations that I held. We are working, I'm working on a plan to do a whole nother round of those mid-September into October, and we'll hit maybe some of the same spots and hit some new spots to try to get some new people, and I'm also happy to have the same people show up. I want to be responsive to these concerns, but also honest about it, some things we'll be able to deal with now, some things we'll probably most likely be able to deal with for the 18-19 school year. But I do really appreciate people speaking out about it, and also don't, don't hesitate to reach out to me if you have concerns, and I thank you for reaching out to me directly. I'll do my best to get back to you in a, in a timely way with at least all that I know at that moment. So, thanks.
Committee reports include more comments. Craig?
Yeah, on the scheduling issue, that kind of hit me like a ton of bricks because it was exactly the opposite of what I was expecting, which was that we would see only improvements in music and art and not comebacks. It's kind of like if your dog came in with two broken legs, you want to make him level by breaking the other two? No, no, this is going the wrong way. I don't understand how this happened, and I'm extremely unhappy that it did. And I would like to suggest that we look seriously at reversing it before the school year is over. And I would like to suggest that we look seriously at reversing it before the school year is over. That's basically all I want to say tonight on that. I do want to mention that in reading the agenda items, there were letters from people who resigned positions, some CSEA members. Some of them mentioned that they were leaving for other districts because they wanted better health benefits that they're not getting here. This is currently a negotiation that's underway, so I won't be talking about the details of that because it's a ball in play. But I do think that we have noticed that there are some issues there. And then on the facilities in operation, I'm very pleased to see how that's going. And it looks like we're in for a very good project and the numbers look like they're coming in in our favor in terms of bond issue and bond rates. And very pleased to see that our tax warrant, which we'll vote on shortly, means lower payments by taxpayers in the district. That's an unusual thing to happen and very nice one. Thank you. Mike?
Okay, first comments. I was wondering if we had statistics on where we are with the kindergarten numbers and, you know, what's the plan that we have over the long term? How is that shaping for heading to the schools? You know, the maximum numbers of students in a classroom?
I don't have the specifics tonight. What I'd be doing would just, I'd be rattling off probably inexact numbers. I don't want to do that, but I can email you or the entire board the numbers tomorrow.
Okay, you have to make sure, I'll just keep on where that finally wound up.
I mean, we are looking at the numbers probably on a daily or almost daily basis, so we'll just, we'll email them to the board tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Facility and operations committee, first comment is to respond to the public. In the capital project that we put together, we are going to address air conditioning in the Rambo school. That's what the current, you know, is currently in the plan that we're going to be hopefully voting on. And to address Rambo, what being exact called is the top floor of where the sixth grades are usually are.
The second floor.
Second floor. And Sergeant, there is, there are a number of ventilation projects, but there is no air conditioning in this particular capital project. But we'll be looking at that for that twenty twenty-two drop-off. Like I said, for facility operations, we're going to start working on the five-year plan for the twenty twenty-two. We were going to be voting on the, working on the seeker proposal, but it sounds like you got pulled out of the, off the agenda.
Emery has comments on that.
So our attorney had a conversation with our architect and the proposal was to do either a type one or an... I'm blanking on the other name.
Type two.
No, it didn't sound, it will be unlisted. Thank you. Unlisted. It has been determined that it's a type two so that we don't need to do that. We just need to fill the work out. So our attorney went back and forth with them and they had an agreement and we got an email to take the proposal off. So it's a matter of paperwork, which will be absorbed in the fee that we already are paying the architect.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, no, it's good news.
It's a good thing.
That's the one outside story that we didn't have come to the FNL committee to like, we had our financial advisors and architects come, but we didn't invite the attorneys one time.
Right, we did before. Right, we actually sent it to you.
And...
That's good news. So it'll save a little money as well.
It'll be time too. It'll be money, but it also is time because type two, it's just a change and it was just on the turf field that we were concerned, but we were good.
Okay, good. So going forward, I think what we're going to see and the community is going to see is some more communication on more of the details of what the capital project is planned to be. I know Dr. Lindahl was going to incorporate that in some of his community discussions. So we'll be looking forward to seeing that. The vote date is currently planned for December fifth. But we still are going to be doing a resolution on the September, the next board meeting, right, September eleventh, which will be, what it will be is, do we want to agree to move forward with the plan as stated now that we've gotten the information presented to us? So that's all I had.
So if you have any questions that were unanswered from the two presentations, please feel free to reach out to Mike as the chairman of the facility operations committee and we could look to get those answered before the September eleventh board meeting.
Thank you. Meredith?
I want to thank the public for the comments regarding the elementary school schedule. I also was really disappointed by it and I think it didn't really, it didn't really satisfy the board's request, in my opinion. But I think that ideas going forward are really good and I look forward to hearing more about that. And we do still have that point six teacher budgeted, so maybe we can take advantage of that to somehow offer students more. This is definitely a program cut.
I wanted to let the public know that the Glenham development, the Texaco project continues to move forward. They are having a, what they're calling a design charrette on September thirteenth from five thirty to eight, September fifteenth from one to five, and five thirty to eight again for tours of the site. And then again on September sixteenth, eight thirty to two thirty P.M. It's a lot of time, but probably it's open to the public, worthwhile to be a part of it if you can. They have a website called glenhammills.com where you can sign up. Anyone can go, but you should let them know.
I had a question about that. Are all three dates supposed to be continuous one? Do you have to attend one and attend two and attend three or are they independent?
Well, I think you could just do the tour. I'm actually not totally sure about that, so... I think you could probably do part and not all. Speaking of Texaco, I, we did hire a new technology teacher and I'm wondering if we are creating a program for that teacher? Is there any professional development happening? There was a grant from Chevron.
It's in the works.
Great.
I'm looking at Mr. Saltish because he's smiling because he and I just had this conversation a little bit earlier today. And so we're looking at, and it's not complete and defined, but project lead the way as one part of the curriculum for startup and so more to come.
Okay.
Mr. Saltish is going to be working with the, our newly hired teacher for the program and then we'll be making some curriculum decisions. But he and Mr. Wright and I have been looking at several, several models of support for the curriculum.
So once there's a budget put together for that PD, I think it would be nice to share it with Chevron because if the money we have does not satisfy need, maybe there would be more money to ask.
You hear that, Mr. Saltish?
You can always ask.
Yeah.
So let's keep communicating so we can have more. I had asked at the last meeting for a list of the high school electives that ended up being offered.
We're working on them. I don't have the definitive list. I want to look at the enrollment numbers. So perhaps when we share the, in the elementary level, that was your task we asked for, we can also share out what the high school enrollments look like. There are definitely some new electives and enrollment that looks healthy in those. But we'll give you a comprehensive look at it.
Okay, great. And the other, the last question I had or comment is in terms of the Brayden's comment about parent involvement with the curriculum. We're starting a new year with the curriculum committee and last year was mostly spent creating a system for teachers to put in for new classes. So I feel like that problem has been solved and I'm wondering about if, will the mission of the curriculum committee shift a little bit? Do you, have you, I don't know if you have any, you can speak to that at all and could we invite a parent to participate in that?
You know, I'll be really honest, I don't have a ton of experience or nor have I got any history of how the curriculum committee works here besides just some things I picked up in meetings. So let me just talk with the team a little bit about that and get back, but I don't see why not. Will be my quick answer to have other people involved.
Thanks.
Is there a meeting date for that?
Celia, is there a meeting date for that?
There is. It's not in my calendar yet, but I have, my secretary is working on the year's calendar for everything. So I believe we're sticking with either the third Wednesday or the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
It'll be end of September will be our first meeting.
Okay.
And Mike, I'm just going to go back to FNL. The next meeting is September thirteenth at seven P.M.
That's great, September thirteenth.
Okay. Anthony?
Hello. Well, I'm going to give the report on the diversity committee first. So I just wanted to announce three things that we're moving forward on at the moment. One is improving black history. We've talked about that in past committee meetings. And I know, thank you to Kenya for getting Mr. Haynes information. I provided some of the information from the Rochester School District on the curriculum on Black Students Matter. And Craig and I have homework assignments for local history. Craig's going to interface with the historical society and I'm going to have a conversation with someone I know in Beacon that may have some history as well. The second thing that we are moving forward with is the review of the code of conduct. And Matt is going to, this is a review by the ACLU and Matt's going to report out to the committee at the next meeting on that. And the third thing is that we're moving forward with a community presentation. This will be a presentation on the school prison pipeline. We want to include listening to that. We also want to talk about the restorative justice program on that. And I've already been recruiting some community members to help me put this together. And then, you know, once we get the logistics straightened out and the date and the speakers and stuff, we'll present that forward. We do have a next meeting on Thursday, September fourteenth at eight fifteen P.M. I know you asked that, Anthony. We're basically aiming for second Thursdays of the month. Didn't necessarily agree to have it every month, but we do at the next month's meeting want to talk about the barriers, how to eliminate some barriers in the schools. And that's where we're going to focus our meeting on that day. I also wanted to thank the school district for sending three teachers to the restorative practices training. I look forward to hearing more about that. And then also that the school is going to be sending three teachers to the undoing racism training. That's also on the agenda, but that I want to talk about later. Besides the diversity committee, there is the request for interest, expression of interest on the land that's neighboring the high school, which is the former female prison, the Beacon Correction Facility. And I've been gathering quite a few ideas. I put, I put a Google Doc together for the board. I also have been talking to people and trying to use Facebook to also recruit some ideas and then kind of put them all together and work with, with the school on that. I know Matt, myself, Emery and Anthony Damato, we met earlier right after the tour in order to come up with questions to ask them. That was another deadline we had to meet. Just a reminder too, that the September fifteenth deadline for the RFI doesn't commit the school district. It just basically discusses, you know, what we think the property should be. And of course we kind of explain what our position, where we would be in that, how we would fit into that. So more to come on that. For my board comments, I just wanted to say that I heard good things about the summer ESI, the environmental science investigator program that was partnered with Beacon Institute. And I'd like to hear more on that as the months go on. That's it. Thank you.
Just one quick thing, the ACL, ACW code of conduct, they, several of them kind of took a vacation this August, so they need a little bit more time, is my understanding. So probably October.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, the Dutch County School Association will have their first meeting a week from this Thursday to September seventh. It's at seven o'clock up at Bowses on Salt Park Turnpike in the administrative building. I'll be attending. If anybody else would like to attend, just let me know so we can share it, right? Rather than going up in separate cars. First meeting typically you meet your other new board members to the committee as well as be discussing our events and plans for the year.
Anthony, did you have a date for the district's housing committee area?
Nope.
Kristen?
In terms of the wellness committee, I'm going to reach out to Karen Bonanno, who will line something up for the beginning of the school year. Or maybe she and I will try and get a phone call to get her part into that. I hope this summer it can happen. I wanted to quickly ask about the, how the rollout of the Teal's grant money is going to happen this school year? What the plan is for that opportunity?
So it's actually not real money that we see, but the program is up in terms of the planning, is up and operational. Our teacher, Mrs. Kurtzis, has been attending Microsoft professional development this summer along with our two consultants from, that are part of the Teal's project.
Those are the volunteers or they...
Yeah, they're considered consultants.
Who did we get up for that?
So one is a gentleman who works for Microsoft. His name is Mr. Norback. And he lives locally, not in Beacon. And the other is Mr. Morash, who did the after-school program at Beacon. So the two of them will share the, we're using a consultant-based support model, which means that they're, they do planning work. He'll do some of the classroom embedded work. We have as of last week nineteen students enrolled. What they've done is for scheduling purposes, we were going to run it as a half semester class and run it in the fall and then run it as a different half semester class, repeat course in the spring for another cohort of students. What they made the request of and what I, what I got from them was agreement on the curriculum. They're actually going to do half semesters, computer science one, and then build on the curriculum in the spring semester for computer science two. We have a number of seniors that are currently enrolled in the class, so this will give them an opportunity to advance and deepen the learning in computer science in the curriculum. I have to work on a separate, you know, kind of language around consultant agreement. We pay a small amount to compensate our volunteers as time as part of, as part of the Microsoft project.
Right.
And that we're building into our Title II A monies and that. So that's what we're coming with.
I just wanted to quickly touch on the SRO idea. I said earlier when we were talking to Chief Solomon that, you know, it was one of our goals and one of the things we've talked about is, is improving our communication and relationship with the governing bodies of the city. And, you know, one of the things is you really can't pick and choose what comes your way. I think we would have picked a different topic around which to build this relationship initially. And I am really appreciative of the complexity that is associated with this position. I also take very seriously the idea that not only are we here to bring our own point of view, but we are here to really listen to other points of view. And this is one of those situations that has, that's going to require that because, you know, the, I take Chief Solomon at his word that this lack of some sort of safety protocol probably does keep him up at night. And he's thinking about... And he's thinking about things from a very specific point of view. I think, I, you know, so I did get a, I did get a message from somebody that I'm very friendly with today, who was talking about the SRO process in their district. And it really stuck with me what they talked about. They went through a process before utilizing an SRO. There were petitions, Facebook rants, debates, powerful student-led discourse and presentations that were against it. And this school ended up going with picking it off. They did have an SRO come in, they lead student mediation. I'm, I'm not saying that's the, and that they find that this student, this SRO is a compassionate, caring adult within that school. I'm not saying that that's what we're going to do, but I'm a big believer in when, when things come your way, you have to look for the hidden gifts in them. And that, that thing right there, where it's a rants, debates, powerful student-led discourse and presentations, I, I feel like we kind of need a bit of that. You know, we need to hear from people and we need to have this discussion because I've attended a couple of the diversity meetings and, and I think that there's a lot of really good work happening there. But this is something that is broader and would touch on a lot of different things. And people really need to share what their point of view is going to be, and we all need to really listen to each other about it. And I, I see this as an opportunity I wouldn't have picked, but an opportunity regardless. And I think that we should really, we should really sort of have it out beforehand. I, I used to have this client that they were a very successful healthcare company, and all they did was acquire successful healthcare companies. And they just, they would pick them, and they would do nothing to them. They would just acquire them and put them in their portfolio. But what they found is, a lot of their really top performers within companies would just, like, lose their minds over what might happen. And then they were, and they would leave and get other jobs. So like, a lot of the reasons why they bought that company were for the people that were in that company, and they would start telling themselves a story and then they would leave. And so a big part of my job was, I would have to go to a company they acquired and just listen to all their fears. And then come back with a list of fears and hand it to our client and just be like, this is what they're afraid of, this is what you need to address. And you need to sort of, you need to figure out a plan for how you'll prevent this from happening, or you need to tell people why it won't happen. But it, I just feel like there's a simmering conversation here that we haven't really had, and we need to have it. And this might provoke that.
I just really wanna say good luck to the new school year.
Oh, yeah.
Way to be so brief. Policy, I just need to finalize some dates. I'm just looking, I have a couple conflicts in September, living back to school. So I should have them by the end of the week.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I just wanna thank all of the students who brought their parents to the back-to-school block party. It was phenomenal. It was a wonderful turnout. Brooke and Ruben Simmons were totally excited. To all of the schools that participated with the block party, we thank you. Class in a Bag would not be so successful without the support of the community. And so I think someone mentioned that the students were the parents, and so that's why it was so successful. So kudos to those parents. For public relations, we do have the survey. It is completed. Thank you, Kristen. I just emailed it while everyone was sitting here. So all the board members now have it for review. If you just take the time out between now and maybe Thursday to look at it and give it your thumbs up, we can move forward with getting that out to the community members. There's some important information that we need, and there's a portion where we actually have to sit and read. Dr. Landau said he loves doing that, so I'll be joining him on that journey. I didn't plan the next meeting date, but I wanted to set it somewhere in October so we'll get a chance to get back what we need instead of just needing to discuss that we're in the process of getting the paperwork back. Safety, they said it was gonna be tomorrow, but if it does, it's gonna be a problem for me, so.
We were shooting for it. There's some, there were some scheduling problems with various people.
That's great. That's fantastic. Because I can't do it. This week is horrible for me. So this is like the worst.
Great.
I mean, I was begging for it, but that ain't gonna do it. I just can't. I, uh, let's see. So I'm, okay. So Beacon, the high school, Kim Lennon, who works really, really hard with the rest of the committee members, is in need of community support. There are several games that they actually work at West Point, and a large sum of money comes from those events. So it's, it's September first, the ninth, the thirtieth, October fourteenth, October thirtieth, and November eleventh. She can be reached at kimroselemon@gmail, and that's K.I.M.R.O.S.E.L.E.N.N.O.N@gmail.com. We know that there are some people who love to volunteer, so we're looking for you to come out and volunteer at these events. The other portion where we get to actually raise funds is have you donate your receipts today. So I do have flyers. You may have received them while Kim was outside with the ninth grade orientation. Pretty much all you do is download the free app, take a photo of the receipt that you have, indicate whether you're male or female, and then you join the district-wide competition. So I guess it's putting all of the schools in competition with each other because the school that, the district that raises the most money, we actually get $10,000. So it was, I, I knew that it was sparks of love in the audience, so I'm hoping you guys just go out there and do it. And so I think that's those two things. And then for me, I just had the, I had asked, I don't know, several meetings back about the after-school attendance with after-school programs and, and then tracking student enrollment. So there was a, I, I look back in my notes, I wanna, I don't know, maybe three years ago, where there was a system actually set up where there's an attendance sheet that is, that does document which students attend which programs. And so that information was supposed to be kept with an administrator, but I don't know which administrator has it. But what I was trying to do is not really delve myself into an area that's none of my concern, but to track whether or not students are participating in the after-school programs that we have here at the school, and if there's an interest from the students on different after-school programs that would keep them here and, and actively here. So everyone who knows me knows that I, I push anything that has to do with after-school. And then lastly, I just wanna say kudos to the Beacon Hoops. They had a very successful year, summer, six weeks. Just wanna thank Mr. Griffin and Lehman for twenty-plus years of service in the community and keeping basketball alive. I do want to brag and write the team that I sponsor, Diamond and Vale, which is my organization, they won the championship. So I don't know nothing about basketball, but those boys play hard. And I just wanna say kudos to all the kids who participated this year. Thank you.
Kenny, you can't say you don't know anything about basketball. You played for the boards last year.
Have you forgotten?
No, I didn't, I didn't forget, but I really didn't play. I think.
And we beat them.
We did win. Mr. Solis, I'm sorry. And we'll be playing this year at, I'm gonna have on my Superman socks.
They already told me that I shouldn't take these in the institution this year.
Oh, really? I gotta get my dribble on.
I have no board comments besides good luck to the start of the school year. On August thirty-first, we are having Superintendent's Conference Day. We're renaming Professional Learning Day. Is that the name that you call it?
Professional Learning Community Day.
Professional Learning Community Day. So, and the calendar you're gonna see now, Professional Learning Community Day is Superintendent's Conference Days. So that's August thirty-first, so I look forward to welcoming all the teachers and staff back. I think it's an exciting day. There's a nice little buzz. The buildings I hear are looking really good. I saw some social media tweets about it as well. The gym floor was listening. It looked like it was brand new. I think that's it. Okay. All righty. Unfinished business. So what I'd like to do for ten point oh one, unfinished business, because it is adopting board goals for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, I would like to have five board members volunteer to read each goal, just so we could publicly state it and really get, listening to them because going forward, it's gonna be all about student achievement, and I think these goals help us get there. So do I have a volunteer to read a goal? Craig will read one.
I'll do fiscal.
Sure.
And I think we probably should be talking about the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget. Looking forward to what we will, will be doing seventeen eighteen, isn't that the one I run now? So just amend that a little bit.
All right. Mike, will you do? Read one?
Sure.
Which one?
I'll take curriculum.
Curriculum? Mary?
I'll take communication.
Communication? Anthony?
Diversity.
Diversity. Kenny? Georgia? Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Craig, fiscal.
The Board of Education will work collaboratively with the superintendent to advocate the financial needs of our district locally and at the state level, and work to secure public support for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget that improves academic offerings.
Thank you. Curriculum: Provide a 21st century educational learning environment that meets individual students' needs and supports them to achieve their highest potential.
Great. Mary?
The board will work to build trust.
Mary?
Oh, sorry, sorry. You need to slung further now.
Communication goal: The board will work to build trust between the district and the community by creating a culture of convivialness which improves communication within the district as a whole.
Thank you. Georgia?
Community engagement: To seek the involvement, collaboration, and participation of the entire community in the learning process in order to promote and support student success.
Thank you. Anthony?
Diversity. Beacon School District is committed to increasing staff diversity to meet educational, social, emotional needs of all students, creating a culture of awareness, equality, and safety while uniting school and community, fostering unity of the school and the community as a culturally aware and diverse entity, ensuring that all students in the Beacon School District receive an equitable education, identifying and addressing the barriers that prevent students from completely experiencing all the district has to offer.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for taking the opportunity to read them. So I need a motion to approve the adoption of board goals for the seventeen eighteen school year.
Motion to adopt board goals for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
Georgia, can you say, can you comment with your questions?
Just with the, you know, obviously the change in years that Craig mentioned.
Any other comments?
I, I have a comment. I went to one community conversation, and I wanna thank you, Matt, for really internalizing the board goals. I think actually I internalized them more when I heard you say them and realized how much they do matter and that we do need to pay attention to them and measure how well we're doing coming up to them. So, thanks.
And I look forward to seeing them more visible throughout the district as well. So I'm hoping that, now that the board has adopted them, that we can start to make them more visible, not just on the websites or computers, but also throughout the buildings and so forth. Anthony?
I also wanted to thank Matt, in terms of the community, the statement that we made on, after the Charleston protest in the.
Charleston.
Charleston, sorry. I'm just kidding, like, and there's no apples. But on the.
You had enough word now.
You're the most hydrated man at this table.
So, but I'd like to, I'd like to thank those, my fellow board members and the, Matt and the district to put out a statement as a reaction to Charleston.
Great. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine oh.
All right, we have two topics for new business. The first topic is the director elections for the New York State School Board Association, Area Nine, Board of Directors election. Correct, Kelly? Okay. We have two candidates that were running for the Area Nine, Karen Ostra-House and John Redman. One is, serves on the Ulster Board, and the other serves on the Florida Central School District. So we need to.
I have a question.
Nominate one, Kelly, and then.
We have until October tenth to do that.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I'm just was confused as to how a person from Florida could run for the.
No, it's Florida School District.
Not the state.
Because I looked him up, and I, and I was reading all of this, I was like, this is in Florida? What?
Florida, New York. Yeah, it's in Orange County.
Thank you.
I expected that comment from Matt.
I would propose we wait on this because I personally don't know if I'm anything about either one of these people.
Yeah, I did a little research.
And I'm assuming that if they're running and serious about it, they're going to be contacting us, telling us they have platform or saying something about their qualifications.
I second the motion to table.
And we don't, we have until October second, so it's a couple days away.
We had one that did contact us and wrote a letter to us.
Yeah.
Karen. We haven't heard from them yet, and I make a decision now.
That's who I was gonna vote for, just on that reason. So that's, I guess, not good.
I'm the letter.
Yeah.
Two more tables.
I'm an easy woo. Send me a letter.
So we need a motion to table agenda item eleven point oh one, for the election of the new, new virtual motion.
So it's just gonna be a motion to discuss, so. It was just to discuss. There was no vote.
Oh, there was no vote on it. It was just to discuss it.
Okay.
All right.
We did it, so we should.
We did it. We need more information from the other candidate before we have to fine. That was the discussion. We don't need it because it was the discussion.
No, he's in charge of it.
So Anthony, this was your item that you wanted to add to the agenda?
Yes. So there is a two-and-a-half-day workshop on Doing Racism being offered here in Dutch County, Poughkeepsie. It's, it's offered nationally, so it's not often offered in this, this way. And according to, I read the policy, if a board member wants to attend, I have to bring it up to the board. So I also wanna mention, I just, I also wanna encourage, this is the, this is the training that the districts are setting three people. So I did, I guess, a comment from somebody in the public that said, hey, if they're gonna send three, maybe they can send six. There's, I mean, do we have six buildings? Would make sense, but, but I would, I would just forward that comment to Matt and for further, for further on that. But as a board member, and I would encourage my fellow board members, I would like to attend this training as part of my board, of board member development.
The only question I have is, can you tell us how we feel it will help you as your role as a board member? Because it seems like I read the event, and it seems like it's more of a practical, not more, not governance of, of it.
As far as I understand, it's, it's open to the public, it's open to teachers, it's open to social workers. It's, and in, in, in my capacity and the diversity committee, I'm engaged in the community and in the public. And I believe these would be successes for me to be a good diversity committee chair in that respect. But, I mean, from, I mean, if you're, if you're just kinda saying that the board, you know, we're at a hundred-foot view of things, I think this kinda helps bring down our view from a hundred feet down to ten or fifty. So I think it would be all of us to, to get a better focus on, you know, what, what's going on. on.
It's not gonna be specific to Beacon now, correct?
No.
What are some of the topics? Where are some of them?
So the workshop addresses the following areas: analyzing power, and I can read the whole paragraph, but it, I mean, I'm gonna do it a service by trying to summarize this. But it examines why poor people, why people are poor, how institutions perpetuate the imbalance of power. Recognizing the internalized manifest, just two, recognizing the internalized manifestation of racial oppression. Three is defining racism. Four is understanding the manifestations of racism. Five is learning from the history. Six is sharing culture. Seven is organizing to undo racism. And that is, that is actually, I think, very important, as explores principles of effective organizing, strategic techniques of community empowerment, the importance of community accountability, and the internal dynamics of leadership development.
I just had a question. Does it serve the same purpose as the restorative practice training where there's a train-to-trainer component? Because the three people that are already gone, when they come back, they, I thought that they would have the ability now to train others. Is that what that's all about, or no? That's only with the restorative practice component? So with this undoing racism, there is no train-to-trainer? It's just like?
My understanding of undoing racism is it's like a personal process that you go through. So it's not something that you just come back and replicate.
That's kind of for you to see. Right, because the restorative practice is.
For you to experience, for an individual to experience. Restorative practices.
It's train-to-trainer component, right?
To a certain degree, yeah.
Okay.
The training that we were able to participate in for restorative justice practices wasn't training the trainer model.
Right. So I think that's good, because they come back and then they teach us. This doesn't have that component.
It serves different purposes.
Yeah.
So it's really for the person's awareness of things like.
Yeah, so it would make him more sensible or give him.
Yeah, I think that this, you know, aligns with, we have one of our board goals, diversity, which is, you know, pretty widespread. And I think this would probably be a good opportunity, especially with Anthony going and then bringing it back to the diversity committee, will help kind of spark, you know, move us along or help us on a path in our goal of diversity, so.
And I think that, I'm hoping that the diversity committee will create, you know, among the other things that they're doing, some sort of like grassroots push, that I think there might be some great ideas that you get from here.
Thank you. I mean, I'm also encouraging my fellow colleagues to go, too. I mean.
I can't go to this one.
But when is that?
It's October 26, 27, and 28.
You got to look through all three days?
Two-and-a-half days. But yeah, you have to commit to all three. I'm sorry. Not my fault.
So everybody go with the discussion piece?
Yes.
Is there a formal vote that has happened for Anthony to attend?
No, I think according to the policy, I think it just comes to the committee, but the committee decides, and then the district.
Is anybody against Anthony attending? Does anybody else want to go?
I can't.
I can't go.
It's kind of, it's a big event to find a little lead, so.
Okay.
So I can register?
Yep.
You don't register. Someone else registers.
Kelly registers me.
Make this happen, hey.
I'm sorry, Kelly.
I'm just saying, you gotta pay papers.
Thank you very much.
We don't have to read this whole thing, do we, Kelly? The tax warrant?
Adopting the tax warrant, just read us listed on the agenda.
Go ahead, Kenny.
Read the whole one?
Sure.
We're ready?
Yep. Adopt the tax warrant first. Alright, I need a motion to adopt the tax warrant for the 17-18 school year.
Is it still moved?
Craig, go.
Second.
Can you get some? Comments, questions?
My name's Miss Lynn.
Sure.
Is it Anthony?
Yeah, you're not that lucky. We fix that. Alright, we need a vote.
The only comment I would make on here is that we gave a great presentation, we explained, you know, the tax levity, and then all the information that's in here. So I really appreciate you for that, and I think you weighed it out fairly clearly for everybody, so thank you.
He's only beginning to pitch, because he wants to pick his own boss.
What did you say?
Why'd you even go there?
Because that's what he wants.
Kelly, like the real call for us.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Ms. Huer?
Yes.
Ms. Platchen?
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Zoff?
Yes.
Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
We break through it.
I need a resolution, a motion to adopt the resolution 0082717A, which is the refunding bonds. Roll call vote. So the motion, that was Georgia.
Second.
Question? Comments, questions? Alright, roll call vote.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ms. Huer?
Yes.
Ms. Platchen?
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Zoff?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden? Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Alright. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting some motion covering relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business under consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything from the consent agenda that anybody would like removed?
Can you repeat what got removed?
Say that again.
Can you tell me again what got removed? What you removed?
1414. On the instructional list, 1404-K2 was removed. And then 1501 was in the agenda, but that's not in the consent agenda. I'm going to remove 14.08.
And I move 1415.
1415. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 14.08, 14.15, and 14.03A. That was Georgia. The second was Bill. Comments, your questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now. I need a motion to approve 14.08. Motion to approve item 14.08. I accept donations. Is there a second?
Second.
Kristen? Comments, your questions?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? With thanks. Thank you for the donations. Alright, 14.15. I need a motion to approve 14.15.
Still moved.
Second.
Kristen, that was Anthony. Comments, your questions?
Yes, I have a couple on this one. It was a little while ago, actually, probably a couple of years ago, but they had come to us and they were looking for our permission to build drainage on our property. And then I thought, then they finally said, never mind, we figured out a way of doing it without needing your property. So I was surprised to see this, because this is talking about drainage on our properties. My first question is, did we give them approval to put drainage on our property?
This was in easement that.
Well, it's not in easement yet.
Well, if you look at the dates, it is. Mr. Hilberg and I met with Douglas County and with the Baseball Association, and there was an agreement, and it talks about all of the games and graduation and all of that. When our attorney reached out to the county, it was never formalized and voted on. We could not find it forward, because I questioned the attorney as well, because the dates go back to the time that it happened. But we did grant them the approval, because they did have to do the drainage. It was because of the neutral field.
Okay.
So this is really something that's already happened, but formalized. And then as we go forward, then.
I just wanted to make sure that we were aware that they had actually built drainage on our land.
Yes.
Wait, so we can do that stuff without board approval?
It should have been board-approved. We thought it was board-approved, but when we look back, there was no, there was no history of it. So our attorney suggested we put it through now, just to formalize it.
I was surprised.
Yes.
How far back does that go? Emery, how far back was that? Two years, three years?
Let me go by my timeline. More than two years.
It's more than two years, more than, it's probably more like four years.
Four years, yes.
Another concern I have is that, I mean, well, I hate the word permanent easement, because it's not a permanent easement. It's a temporary easement until the lease is up. So I did sort of misnomer, because I had a real problem with it was a permanent easement forever and ever. But it's, you know, we're a landlord in there, and they're leasing the property from us, and they get the easement as long as they are leasing the property. So I don't like the terminology, even though it does say in there that it's until the lease agreement is up. It just sort of, it's confusing to people. You hear permanent, you think forever and ever.
Permanent for the terminal lease.
Yeah, that's what it is.
But that's not permanent.
That's not permanent.
That's for the terminal lease. And also, it's very, it's very strongly worded for something that was, that we're trying to fix retroactively.
I think it was the same resolution. We hadn't changed it. So this would have been the language that we should have voted on forward.
And another concern I have is, and this is probably a question more for lawyers, what is our liability? It's drainage on our land. If there's flooding, you know, if water goes into somebody else's property because of the drainage, or if it puts more water on our property, you know, will it prevent us from using our property? I mean, that's basically, at some point, part of that property should be, it might be a school. But I'm more concerned about if the drainage goes, you know, if there's a problem with the drainage, or just a big storm and water goes from that drain on someone else's property. I don't want to be liable for that. I think that should be the person that constructed the drainage, that they did the engineering and everything else. And I don't see anything in here that, in this agreement, that, you know, that denies us from any issue with the drainage. The other thing is that typically, there's pretty strict rules and laws on water management, and depending on what kind of drainage it is, if it's retention pond, then retention ponds supposed to have a certain amount of water in it all the time. There's penalties if it's not kept up to date and all that. And I, you know, I'm not sure, you know, that we're giving them the right to maintain it, but if they don't, does that become our liability?
Yeah.
And I don't see anything in here at all indicating that we are not liable. That concerns me as well.
If it was never voted on, I mean, there's no reason to, at least my limited understanding would be that we should make this as robust as possible to protect the district if we're actually going to make an official document.
And according to the legislative, they're not gonna vote on this until October anyway, so. So like I said, I'm not sure we can answer all these questions right now.
I'm inclined to table this, to get legal counsel on the points that Mr. Zoff has raised. I'm concerned about the use of the term permanent easement on a leasehold, which expires in about a year or so. It's really a fine point of law that perhaps we should consult upon, and the liability question is one that I think lawyers might want to examine.
So can you just write that to me in writing, so I'm not gonna remember all those points?
Sure.
Can you just send me an email with it, so then I can forward it on to the attorneys for your questions? So I need a motion to table the item.
Yeah, I'd like to move to table this one.
Craig, my motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Kristen, is there comments or questions about tabling the item?
Pending further consultation from our attorneys.
Yes.
All those in favor? Table on that? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. 14.03A. Motion to approve 14, agenda item 14.03A, instructional personnel list, section A. Alright. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably a familiar question. So there's a number of resignations on here. I'm just wondering if we have conducted any exit interviews with people to try to learn, you know, insights about what can be improved, you know, issues and what can be improved in the district.
So thankfully, probably half of the people, especially the food service, you'll see later on in the agenda. So we had a couple of resignations. We had one cook manager resignation. He lived far away, and, you know, so we know the reason why. So there's a lot of changes, promotions, which is great for food service. I think it was mentioned earlier, two of our bus drivers specifically have left for health insurance, and they were specific in their resignation letter. So that's a concern of ours. And one of our school monitors is later on as a bus driver. She passed her chest, and she's a bus driver. So although it looks like a lot of resignations on this side, they're staying with the district. They're just moving up in sound positions.
Okay, thank you. And then you did say that as a practice going forward, we'll look to gain any information, certainly, you know, insights certainly from people that are leaving the district about how we can improve.
Right. That's why, one of the reasons we included your, the resignation letters, is helpful for you to know in some aspects why.
Okay, thank you. All those, any other comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I'm sorry, Mike, you made the.
I made the motion, yes.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Hey, I need a motion for to addendum item 15.01.
Motion to approve agenda item 15.01.
I already made that. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you?